Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our monthly County Commissioners Meeting. As you see, I'm not Chairman Bryant, but he had, his wife had some medical issues that re- put her in the hospital, so she, he is with her at this time, and we just ask that you will keep him and his wife Sandra in your prayers. And I will try to do my best to lead this meeting, so please forgive me if any mistakes occur, but I'll do the best I can. At this time, we'll have an invocation by Commissioner Jimmy Silver. Please stand.
Well, yesterday as we started this meeting to be with Commissioner Bryant and his family, be those families in Texas, and also here in North Carolina suffered for the storms, but we asked that the business be conducted today in an orderly manner, in a godly manner. God, we just want to thank you for what you've done for us and keep us safe in this county. In your name we say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, could I get a motion for adoption of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned, and second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the approval of the agenda has been carried out and passed. Moving on, we'll read the conflict of interest statement. In accordance with the Halifax County Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedures and NCGS Section 153A-44, it is the duty of every member present to vote on all matters coming before the Board unless there is a conflict of interest as determined by the Board or by law. Does any Board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the Board today? If so, please identify the conflict, and the remaining Board members will vote to consider this requested excuse. Councilwoman Silver?
No conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict.
Okay, seeing that there's no conflict, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. I trust that everyone has had time to review those items on the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Webb and second by Commissioner Gary Reddy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approved. Okay, moving on now to our public comment time period, and before we, we do have one person listed for the public comment, and before that person comes before us, I will read the policy regarding our public comment period. As required by GS 153A-52.1, the Halifax County Board of Commissioners provides a public comment period once a month as an item of business on its regular meeting agenda. Now is the scheduled time for the public comment period. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and begin speaking. You will have three minutes to address the Board. If you have documents that you want to give to the Board, please hand those out before going to the podium. I will not go over the rules for the public comment period because they were posted by the door of this room. By signing up to speak, you have acknowledged that you are familiar with the rules and that you will abide by them. We will do our best to hear from everyone who has signed up to speak, but if we are unable to accommodate everyone in the time allotted, you will be invited to speak during our next public comment period, at which time you will be given priority without having to sign up again. We appreciate your interest in Halifax County Government, and we look forward to hearing from you. At this time, I invite our first speaker to come to the podium and give your remarks. And that person is Pamela Blair.
Hi.
Hi, good morning.
My name is Pamela Blair, and I am a citizen of North Carolina, and I am also a delegate for the GOP in Halifax County. I have started attending Democratic meetings regularly, and my position is Republican or Democrat, God needs to come first, and that is why I am so pleased with seeing this part of this, starting out with prayer and the pledge of allegiance, and having pastors in prayer dictate this, I believe it, and seeing the Democrats and the Republicans working together, and I really love to see that. And prior to moving here, I was not, I voted based on the candidates, but right now, I'm here to talk about putting God first, which you have done, and the Convention of States. And I don't know if what our county's position is on that, but I know it has gone before the state and has passed the House, and I think it's a first attempt to get it to North Carolina, and I'm not sure if all of you know about it, but it is regarded Part 5 of the U.S. Constitution, which is, there is a position and there's information on it here that people can go to, but it is about restricting, it's restricted to proposing amendments that will impose physical restraints on the federal government, limit its power and jurisdiction, and impose term limits on its officials and members of Congress. And the Convention of States is a grassroots, nonpartisan movement to bring more power to the states, to institute term limits on a federal level, to strengthen federal deficit spending, balanced budgets, and limit the scope of the federal government in defining general welfare. And what it does, it's part of the U.S. Article 5 of the U.S. Constitution, and what it does is it gives states the power to call a convention to propose amendments. It takes 34 states to call a convention and 38 to ratify any amendments that are proposed. Our convention would only allow the states to discuss amendments that, quote, "limit the power and jurisdiction of the federal government, impose physical restraints, and place term limits on federal officials." And there is, if you go to conventionsofstates.com, there is a link that you can send to your state legislators, and since it did pass the House, and then you go on to the Senate this, next month, I believe, it's when it resumes, you can send this request that they supported to your senators, and I feel like-
Ms. Blair, we'll give you another 30 seconds to wrap, another 30 seconds to wrap up.
Okay, and also, there is a G of the Convention of States breakfast in Gastonia, Gaston County at the Firestone Grill on this Friday at 9:00, if anyone is interested.
Thank you. We thank you, Ms. Blair, for your comments.
And now we'll move on to agenda items, and that first being comments from our Halifax County for all their projects update.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Coming to you again with our hot topic, we're trying to keep that before you, at least on a quarterly basis, and this morning, I'm pleased that we have three of our ISPs, our Internet service providers, one has requested to come before you in September. So before us, we have this morning, it's not Eric Dixon, she's much prettier than Erin, subbing in for Eric will be Jan Harris, seated there, and then we also have Steve Brewer from Brightspeed, and we have Justin Delancy from Charter, who is actually resident, is the one that will come to you in September. So we'll first have Access On, and they're going to report on the USDA Reconnect Project, which is primarily in the Hollister area, both in Halifax and Warren counties, and then Steve Brewer will come forward from Brightspeed, and he's going to present both on the Great Grant Project, which is their current active project, and he may reference a very, very recently awarded small cab project with 22 residences, and then Justin Delancy with Charter will talk to you about the Ardoft Project, which is primarily in the eastern area of Halifax County, but has some other spots for in-vules in other areas. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to them. Ironically, we're going A, B, C, Access On, Brightspeed, Charter. Jan, you're first up with Access On. We're going to move them together, my dear. There we go, and then page down, so tiny, and my reading glasses don't even, yep.
Good morning, Commissioners and members of the community, thank you for having me today to talk with you about an update on our fiber installation for Halifax County. As Christina mentioned, Eric Dixon really wanted to be here today, but he is out from surgery and did not get medical care, and so I also am going to do my best to take us through this update today. I am Jan Harris. So today, I'm going to give you an over, a project overview and reminder of our service offerings, an update on our recent progress, as well as upcoming timelines. So as a reminder, as Christina mentioned, we are operating under the Reconnect grant from the USDA. You can see that covers portions of southern Warren and southwestern Halifax Counties. You can see a breakdown there of the serviceable addresses covered under that grant area. We have our project broken down in phases. You can see Phase 1 there is primarily in the Abden community of Warren County and surrounding areas, and then Phase 2 will cover the southeastern portion of the Warren County serviceable area and move into Halifax Counties. Breaking it down into phases will allow us to bring customers online faster as opposed to putting all the network in the ground and then, and then then the ground running there. For our service offering reminder, we are going to be buried fiber to the building Internet service. We will only have two equipment hut junction points that will not be fully underground. A fully underground network will allow it to be more secure, consistent, and not subject to interference, also better prepared for what happens in the future as far as the network goes. I don't know, you know, yesterday it rained a little bit, and my Internet map for a couple of hours, underground network will help prevent that from happening. We will have various data packages ranging from 300 megabit up to 2.5 gigabit or higher if needed, which are going to be symmetrical up and download speeds, and we will have business and residential offerings available, working with the customer to see what will best suit their needs. Also, understanding that affordable Internet is important for all households, you know, access to Internet, so we will work with those qualifying families on a more affordable option as needed. We will focus on local customer service with an office right there in our coverage area that folks can walk into, I don't know if anybody can even remember a time, there was an Internet office you did walk into and come see me, talk to me, so we will be right there in Warrenton, and I'll have an update on that here in the coming slides. Our service add-ons will be premium Wi-Fi as needed, we'll have a premium onsite service with tech solutions, options available, as well as access on voice for those that want to keep a home phone line. So our progress update, we have started fiber installation in the ground, as well as getting our equipment hut installed for Phase 1, that is located, as a reminder, in Warren County. Hired a local person to run, or a person to run local operations, who also happens to be local, me, I'm a Warren County native, and I relocated back home a couple of years ago, but it makes this, being a part of this project even more meaningful, knowing the needs in our communities, in rural areas. And we also have finalized our Phase 2 detailed plan, which, as I mentioned, will prioritize Halifax County residents and addresses. This is some recent progress in pictures you can see on a very cold morning in January, there was snow on the ground, we gathered to document breaking ground construction in our Phase 1 Warren County, you can see our equipment hut there, to the right, some current progress for construction that is part of our Phase 2, and our local office is going to be located at 107 East Franklin Street in Warrenton, some may know it as the Danrem Building, it is that brick warehouse that is being renovated into some apartment spaces and retail space, and that is where our local office is going to be. The outfit for that has been started, hopefully will be completed in just a few days, last word I've heard, so as soon as we're able, we will have that office open, and the public can come in and talk to us. For our key upcoming timelines here, you can see for the third quarter of 2025, we anticipate completing Phase 1 fiber construction and equipment hut install and turning on our first Phase 1 customer. The office construction, we expect to be complete and open in the coming days. We have also posted jobs to hire within our community, it's very important to us to, to have community members be working with us in our office there, we'll have a customer service representative and fiber tech staff, and have currently completing interviews for that, and have a lot of applicants from the community, so I'm really pleased for that. We also will be, again, our Phase 2 equipment hut site work, that equipment hut will be located in Essex, as well as our fiber installation in the Essex Hollister commute, so you will see construction in those areas, be on the lookout for that. And we anticipate that our first Phase 2 customer will come online in the first half of 2026, in an effort to not overpromise and underdeliver, we have put that as the first half of 2026, anticipate it being in the early part of that, but want to be clear and transparent on our timelines there, understanding that, you know, we may run into some delays in our supply chain timeline delivery for equipment, as well as construction, and we all know how things can delay construction progress, although it's moving along nicely, we just want to be clear about potential holdups along the way. And that, oop, I hit the pencil, there we go. So thank you for the opportunity to be here today, I'll be happy to try and answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioner Reddy.
Good morning, Ms. Harris, how are you? As a teacher at Halifax Community College, I'm very excited about the potential for a lot of my students to be able to go home and do their schoolwork using reliable Internet. I do have two questions, you said you all will be identifying families who need affordable options, will you all also be working with the schools to help identify these families?
Absolutely, open to that, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we, it's just about communicating, and so this will start that line of communication now, yes.
But some of my students live with their grandparents, or sometimes a foster parent or others who are on fixed incomes, so please do so. And you said there would be an office in Warrenton, are there plans to also have an office here in Halifax County?
Right now, we'll be operating out of our, our office that will be in Warrenton, with potential, we could always look into that as we continue to grow the network, and, and we will be a mainstay here in the communities. Right now, we're starting with the, with plans just for the Warrenton office right now.
Yeah, please do, a lot of our families have transportation challenges, so if they can't get sometimes somewhere down the street, I know it would be a challenge to travel 20 or 30 minutes away.
I do understand that, yes, and I will note that.
Okay.
Kick it up and change.
All right, thank you, I'll help you advocate.
I will, I will.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a rates, know the rates already, if somebody could check it off, because some people looking at Starling for their, before they commit to something else?
I do understand that. We will be publishing our rate structure, I can, in the next couple of weeks, it will be published online, our, our website is accessoninternet.com, and I can certainly update Christina when that is published online. I think we have, based on the market, a very competitive, affordable rate plan for our, our customers, so yes, we will be publishing that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, getting this stuff down to the Hollister area is very, something we've been waiting for in the county for a while, so at this point, is there anything we as a county can do to help you in any way along this process?
I will let you know.
Please do, if there's something, if there's something we as a county can do to help you along this process, please push that up to you and everybody above you to let them know, reach out to us, and if we can help, we'll be glad to, because like I said, I know we've been waiting to get this stuff to that area for a while.
Yes, I appreciate it. Yes, I appreciate that, and, and very familiar with the area, and I do know it's, it's long overdue for good connections in that area, so I appreciate that a lot, and I'll be certain to reach out.
I have one question. Can you go back to the map of your service area? So at the, I'm from this area, so I know, I've been studying this map very well. So in the Phase 2, um, at the, sort of at the tip in, um, of the Hollister area, Essex, um, it goes in 43 where 561 splits off, and it sort of looks like it goes in 43, but it doesn't go down 561. And, uh, we've been told that if we see the knee there, that we could extend it down 561. And I tell you, there is a knee, because I live, and we've had a lot of new houses to, to go up closer to the intersection, so it's not like it's, um, space without homes and residents. Um, but I will tell you that a lot of us have also looked into Starling or have Starling, because that is the only option that we've had for right now, so.
And we've been working to get, you know, this in the ground, and it's, we're moving along in a nice pace, but I do understand our customers have gone to that, and we can talk about options, you know, when those addresses are ready. So just so I'm clear, are you talking south down 561 or north?
561 runs east to west, so that would be the west, going towards Lewisburg. 43 runs north to south.
Okay, got it, okay. Yeah, I can talk to our, uh, project manager about that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Got one other question for you. Would it be some way people could actually enter their address and look at, look it up and see if they're gonna be offered service, because my age and that map, we ain't working out too well this morning.
Absolutely. Right now, if you go to www accessesoninternet.com, there will be a, an interest form where you can fill out your contact information and address, and I will get back to you on if that is a serviceable address. What I'm also doing is if that address is not, you know, serviceable under the grant, say that. If it isn't, I'm keeping track of those, so that we'll know, you know, once we fill, we're obligated under the grant to serve those addresses first. Once we do that, we're planning to grow as the need fits, you know? So I'm keeping track of, of all of those that have reached out, and I will get back to, uh, inquiries based on where their address falls, in the grant area or without, and a projected timeline for when they might be able to see service.
And I, because I had one teacher, she lives on Ida Road, and she was concerned, because she was talking about her students having a connect problem. She said, "They're not the only ones." As a teacher, I have to go to Dollar June sometime and utilize the parking lot internet. So do you, I'm there to set covering Ida Road even by chance?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but I can look while, uh, when I'm back at my computer here.
Okay, thank you.
So would it be a good idea to share with residents in this area that they can sort of put their adri- go to the website, put their address in and see what service areas will be provided? And if not, also submit an interest form?
Please, yes, absolutely. Um, I encourage anyone to do that. I have, I have already been in contact with some in the Hollister community that have done that already. As we approach our construction in Phase 2, we will, they'll be sending out something in the mail to say, "Hey, this is why you see construction, it's us, you know, service is gonna be coming to your address." And then when we're ready to start turning, turning customers on, there will be something else they'll get from that outreach, just we have that address. Um, but those that reach out, I'll be, where I have their contact information, we'll be reaching out directly to say, "Hey, we're ready." So please encourage everyone to submit an interest form, and I'll let them know whether they'll be, where they are in the timeline for.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions that come next? Well, we thank you for coming and sharing us today.
Thank you for having me. Have a great day.
All right. Good morning.
There we go. A little bit bigger.
Madam Chair, Phil Trench, my name is Steve Brewer. I'm director of government affairs for Right Speed. Delighted to be with you again today. I was here, uh, thanks for last fall, and gave you an update, but happy to return and be here today. Got a slide that I'll run through, and then certainly be happy to take any questions. So, just real quickly, um, the slide before you shows a number of locations where we are building, uh, our fiber network, or have already built our fiber network within the community. Um, obviously, and we've got the county, and then you'll, you'll see down in the legend there is reference to the wire center. That is the, I'll call it peach belly degree, which is a, you know, kind of a, so it shows that we have, um, services or we offer services throughout the county. The great grant locations are identified there. Um, we had, we previously won a grant that allowed us to provide fiber services to 384 locations as part of the North Carolina DIT administer the great grant. Those, um, locations should start coming online just prior to the fourth quarter of next year, with conclusion date during fourth quarter of next year. Um, as Ms. Wilson previously mentioned, we were recently awarded a small grant for, um, the CABT grant program. Um, CABT stands for Complete Access Broadband, and they actually have two rounds, left for two part. Uh, but there's 22 locations that we're awarded, and while you really can't see them on the map due to the concentration of dots and overlay, there are 22 locations. Um, and then finally, the last, the private investment and OFS, OFS in the, in the facility. So the private investment locations, we have just got 20,000 locations where we've used our own private investment dollars, um, apps and any grant dollars whatsoever to bring, um, fiber internet services, uh, throughout the community. And, uh, those are indicated by the, the red dots, obviously there's more consequences than that. Below those, um, you do see, and quite frankly, I probably should have had my team overlay the, the pink dots on top of the red, because, uh, just over 17,000 of the private investment locations are already open for sale, so customers can subscribe to those today. So, uh, and then, one of the dots not quite there, here, um, according to NCDIT, your county has approximately 100, I think the number is 165 locations that either don't have service that meets the federal government's definition of broadband, or they are not currently part of a grant that will fund them to meet that, uh, double fiber to broadband. So, NCDIT, just last week, I believe, published a map. So, um, if you go to their website, you, it's the, the B, uh, is, the next round of broadband grants, is the B grant program. They have, there is a map available out there for all of our counties in the state, and in your case, it's identifying, uh, I believe the number is 164, 165 locations that are eligible for the next round of broadband grant. So, and, and I would imagine that those locations are scattered throughout the county, but that information has just recently become available. Um, NTIA, which is the federal agency that is administering the federal, the federal B program, uh, it's a, NTIA is the, the federal administrator. NCDIT is the state administrator of that program. They recently, um, NTIA recently released a very compressed schedule that should have, unless the dates change, should have the next round of grant recipients announced. Um, and this, quite frankly, is largely federally across the United States, very early in September. And then NTIA is required to sign off on the grant awards. And they have committed, they have currently committed to do so by the end of this calendar year. So, if everything does go to schedule, um, there should be a plan in place in this county through the local council, which is very exciting, and congratulations to all of you for your diligence and hard work, potentially for working with us, uh, and, and that effort as well. So, um, that's what I have for you right now, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. I know, uh, at this past fall, when I addressed this group, um, I went into a bit more detail about the service off, service offerings, pricing, uh, whatnot, but I'll be happy to go over any of that again if you have questions.
Have any questions? Commissioner Silver?
Again, that map is not working well. I think I need to trade seats for Gary over there. Mr. White Oak area covered up that way, Meadok.
I'm sorry, I've...
White Oak, Meadok area up near Hollister, or was it?
No, did this?
So, that means, um, we are not currently providing fiber services in that area. So, there were two, there were a couple of different resources you can go to and find out. Um, because this county here is number providers, those number, so. So, if you go to NCDIT's website, they have a map called the Broadband Status App. If you go there, you can enter in your service address. That will tell you if, if that location is currently served, meaning it has speeds of at least 100 by 20. Now, keep in mind, everything that we're putting in is fiber. So initially, customer can be able to receive speeds of 2 gig by 2 gig. It's not for boxers. But that map will show you, it shows as served, that means there's someone already able to provide at least 100 by 20, that's 100 million to your home for business, and that's a federal definition of broadband. If it, if it is not, uh, excuse me, if it has been awarded a grant, but that grant is currently in the process of being built out, that, uh, app will identify who the grant recipient is, and in general, it will also identify the approximate delivered date of service. And then if it shows as unserved, that means, uh, there has been no grant awarded, and it doesn't meet the federal definition of, of broadband. So here, and technically, you should be able to go to that app right now, and there should be about 165 locations in this county that show up as unserved. I mean, all others are either already served, or there is a, uh, grant in place to bring that level of service to them. That's a really good, um, resource. I, quite frankly, I use it every day. And then certainly, if a customer, um, is interested in Right Speed services, you can go in and you can enter the service address, um, and it will indicate what level of service is available there.
Okay, their site was NCDIT?
Yes, if you go to North Carolina Department of Information Technology, and then search for Broadband Status App, APP, uh, it's, it's a very, very useful tool.
Our county manager is gonna send out those websites to us in case we miss those. Commissioner Reddy.
Same thing, I addressed the other, you know, we want to see high speed in it as much as we can in Halifax County. Is there anything currently we could do to, the county could do to help you in, in your endeavor?
And thank you for that. Um, by and large, uh, not really at this point. Permitting is a really big challenge. Um, railroad crossings are expensive and very, very slow to cross, but overall, um, you know, things are progressing nicely. Um, uh, you know, obviously, for our private investment locations that are generally located in the communities, um, cities within the, within the county, uh, that work is, that permitting work is largely within, uh, vast majority of those locations are already open for sale. But I, I will tell you, permitting is a challenge, uh, and that's permitting with poll attachers, permitting with, um, you know, NCDIT works very well with us, but, you know, another thing, um, that makes permitting a challenge is just all of a sudden, we've had this influx of billions, of billions of dollars to do this on a very compressed schedule. So, uh, a lot of the organizations that it's necessary to permit with, they are not staffed to meet those immediate requirements, and that's understandable. So we're all working together, um, in order to, you know, to deliver these services as quickly as possible, but if, you know, resources are a challenge particularly as to that permitting. But right now, in this county, I think we're pretty much there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more?
Good, it's still morning.
Good morning, thank you for coming.
Justin Lancy with Charter Communications, I think you're doing well. You know, these, uh, these meetings where we have all the providers come in, uh, tend to get sort of confusing, right? As Commissioner Silver says, you get a lot of maps put up there, and then you're trying to discern, you know, one provider's dots from another provider's dots, or another provider's area. So, I didn't bring a map, not to confuse you. What Charter, uh, is, is doing in the county is, is quite huge, and we're very proud of it. Um, since there are a few new members, I'll, I'll, I'll go over the, the ARDOF program. It's the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. Uh, it was a federal reverse auction in which, um, the federal government said, "Okay, we've got all of these census block groups across the country that are uncertain, completely uncertain. We're going to allow providers to bid on completing those census block groups." Um, so what Charter did, we were very aggressive, especially in North Carolina and in Halifax County. We bid on just about every available census block group that we could, and we were, we were very successful. Through the ARDOF build, we will be, um, connecting about 5,500 homes, uh, to, to fiber internet. We project that 200, 2,200 of those homes will be connected this year, and then the balance of that will be done by the second quarter of next year. So we're, um, we're, we're just getting going in the actual construction. We have activated, uh, a couple hundred, mostly on the western side of the county. We have built over from Warren County in a ARDOF build in Warren County. We've completed that build, and now we're starting over in, in Halifax. Um, if you'll recall back to Steve's map, you know, he had some dots where they were. Uh, essentially, if you take any other unserved area, any other unserved census block group in the county, with the exception of, of those 165 homes that Steve talked about, we're covering them all. Uh, so, very excited, very happy about it. We're moving along at a, at a really good pace. Uh, we've been building ARDOF now for, uh, going on almost four years, so we've, we've gotten the hang of it. We're, we're progressing steadily. Um, I will say, as, as Steve said, permitting is a, an issue for all providers, especially when you talk about construction of this magnitude and all of the permits that go into those projects. But we've got great working relationships with DOT, where we've got great working relationships with poll owners where we can, uh, so we hope to kind of keep that off your plate. But if you hear something come up, uh, you know, you hear a poll owner, you hear the DOT saying they, we're getting a lot from Spectrum, just reach out to us. Let, let us know how we can partner, and, um, yeah, we, we certainly want to be good partners with the community. Additionally, what I will say is this puts, typically will put a strain on any county inspection services that may deal with power or may deal with, um, permitting. So just, you know, any way that we can work with you to help relieve those tensions, we're happy to do it. Uh, and, and finally, as with any large scale construction projects, there's going to be, you know, some, there's gonna be some homeowners that are happy, right? Either we're gonna come through, we're gonna be laying some cable. Uh, after it's rained, we might leave it dimmed, and we try not to. But if we leave a rut in somebody's yard, you know, we're gonna fix it as soon as we know about it. So if they come to you, let us know, we're gonna fix it as soon as possible. Again, we try to keep those things off your radar if they do pop up. So anything that we can do to be better partners, we're happy to as well. We're excited about the work in the county, and we're excited about connecting these, you know, over 5,000 homes starting. And that's the general gist, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, go ahead, Commissioner Reddy.
So people do get excited about, uh, the prospect of having internet or, once it's installed, but then they become disappointed when they see it's not high speed. So, will your developments be high speed?
It's fiber internet build, high speed. Yeah, we, we don't have, on the residential side, we don't currently offer, you know... side, we don't currently offer, you know, 2 gig symmetrical speeds because we don't, our market doesn't show that that's a purchase that often gets made, but we do have gig speed. You know, if the market changes, the fiber is there, the backbone and the capabilities there to increase that. You know, the other thing about Charter, we operate our Spectrum brand of products, we operate 41 states. So our offerings are ubiquitous across that entire 41-state footprint. We know what you're going to get when you're a Spectrum customer, you're going to get top-quality fiber, top-quality video, and also our fastest-growing mobile option as well. And if you're, any of the customers in the county will be able to have that mobile service as well. So it's top-of-the-line network.
And will you all have the infrastructure, let's say when storms come or other natural disasters, to deploy enough people to fix the issues?
North Carolina has the largest concentration of Spectrum employees, most of that are technicians, right? So we've got about 2,000 employees in the state, a good number of those are technicians, we mobilize them anywhere across the state whenever disaster hits. If it's just a thunderstorm that causes an outage, we get that back up quickly. If, heaven forbid, it's something much larger like a hurricane, we also mobilize forces and we, again, can lean on that 41-state footprint and all of those employees will mobilize groups from our state to come and help us.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Commissioner Silver?
Well, you didn't have a map to bother me.
I didn't have a map to bother me.
But I'm still puzzled because there's White Oak, that area up around that way, Me Doc, nobody had dots in that area, so, is that an area you're going to be servicing, do you know?
And my recollection of the map is that we are, but I will, I will go back to my computer back there and I'll pull it up and we'll make sure you're getting it up before.
Okay. Thank you. You us, last chance, I think size one would provide it.
I believe there was, the census block groups that we covered were in that area. And the other thing too is, even if we don't have a particular census block group that covers a home, we have to build network to connect all of the census block groups that we're, so we are crisscrossing the county with our network. So chances are, even if you're not in a census block group, we're going to come pretty darn close to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time and information and sharing that with us. All right. Let me get to, our next item on our agenda is item B, our 2025 CJI law enforcement equipment grant. Captain Joe Silly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As a CJI grant, so the Justice Initiative offers a Brian Jagg grant is what it's actually called. We're requesting permission to apply for said grant. The grant will be utilized to purchase fiber radio systems for those of our vehicles, patrol vehicles that currently do not have them, and the future vehicles we hope to be getting soon. Make sure that every vehicle we have is updated with a fiber system. You know, the county is rather large, the old system is outdated. And transmission from, say, Officer Littleton to Scott LaNeck is non-existent on some of those devices, so that's what this grant is for, it'll give us 18 fiber systems to be able to be installed in these vehicles.
I think this is a great idea and a great effort, helps with safety of your officers and also service and making sure that our services are provided quickly as possible. I just had a question about some of the information. So it's radio, so will your radio, and I know this is new software, so will this new software link well or connect well with like 911 services, their software, or do we need to purchase additional software for those offices as well to make everybody?
No, it's already in place.
Okay.
We actually have some, most of our vehicles have it. This is, this grant from these 18 is to satisfy the ones, the units that we have left that do not have those radios.
Okay.
And the newer vehicles that are coming in to allocate them as well. So the system, fiber system is already in place in Halifax facility, most of them.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions?
No, I'll make a motion, so maybe, because I think he's about 10 or 15 years behind because I've been retired. It usually takes long before control.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jimmy Silver, there's a second, second by Mr. Commissioner Beard. All right, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Captain.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, thank, congratulations. I forget that phone.
About 15 years behind.
All right. And we're moving on to item C, request to return fund balance. Our Health Director, Cheyenne James.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I came back this morning to talk to you. So I stand before you this morning in request to return fund balance that we have discovered has been removed since 2014. So in March of this year, during our budget season, we had identified a budget amendment that was approved by the water commissioner in the amount of $2.5 million that we had brought to the attention of county management during our budget meetings to inquire about the budget amendment, the nature of it, since we weren't aware of the money being taken from our fund balance account. And just to get an understanding of the methodology that we've been using for our agency as it pertains to the utilization of our fund balance. In verbal meetings, we identified that the methodology that we were using was incorrect and has been for 20 years. So, understanding that and realizing that we have been making money for the past 17 years, we truly have been in a state of discovering what it is that our fund balance probably should be. And looking at 20 years of books and finances to have an idea of the funds that have been taken and reverted back. And as long as I've been employed by the Halifax County Health Department, one of the things that stood out to me as a frontline was, well, he told us that we were losing money. So when I was appointed to this position, it was one of my goals to have an understanding of our finances and to understand why it is, that we're in a deficit, everything we do. And maybe you guys will see that email from me with a lot of supporting documentation for this request that I don't highlight a little bit throughout my time here in the podium. But I did want to submit a little letter to you all for a formal request for the return of those funds. After having several conversations with county management, it was my goal and wanting to ensure that it was returned due to a few different things we were. I want to drop in on the history of our fund balance, the history of General Statute, as well as it pertains to our fund balance and its protections. General Statute 138, 39D, states the fees collected under the authority of this statute are to be deposited to the account of the local health department so that they may be expended for other purposes in accordance with the provisions of the local government budget and fiscal control act. So this statute was enabled to protect local health departments, to protect this from change in commissioners, change in point of view as it pertains to the work of those days. And I think kind of the politics are changing with county management as well. So this is, this General Statute is really something that we do to our agency and it's something that I mentioned does protect us in situations like this. So in 1999, the county manager, Paul Crawford, made an attempt to take fund balance from the local health department here in Halifax County. He was met with a letter from the state attorney requesting that he return that money and so he did. County manager Depp had made an attempt to take funds from the local health department. And as a result, as a letter from the state, he never even taken those funds. We also have a state agreement, agreement that is a consolidated agreement that is signed by our agency, it's on by county management, it's on by county attorney, that states that any money maintained and earned revenues by our programs in our clinic and our agency, it can be spent back in that program, which ensures the continuity of services that we're able to provide from that county business. We have 30 programs that we maintain and budget for 30 single years. You can imagine what kind of beast that is for our finance staff to have to endure every single year to allocate and predict what revenues may look like, what expenses may look like as they are growing. County finance, when it comes to our funds as the state is funding them, is viewed as cash on hand, one day cheaper, money in, money out. We maintain all 30 of those programs internally to ensure that we keep records of programs that are being done, programs that are moving, that drive our decisions and. So we were able to reconcile just 10 years of county audit books, and this was done by myself and Ms. Reese, who is my assistant health director and our county officer at work. And we identified a total of $6 million just over, a budget amendment that was prepared for excess cash from our agency back to the county. And I would like to call on Ms. Reese to be in our overview of profit and loss as it relates to that investigation that we did. And she has been made out that we wanted to paint a picture of the whole list of homes that we had identified, to help draw pictures for us.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. So when we met with our board of health, our board of health people had told us a lot of conversation. Some of our board of health members wanted these particular breaks to be streamlined so you all could see these, so we wouldn't have you like a chasing butterflies and wasting your time. But anyway, I wanted to share a couple highlights from this one on my page that I've never seen. So if you look at this, what we were asked to do by one of our board of health members was to go back and take county books, use their books, use their books to review the county books and go back and return the fund balance, what we would have done. And so we started fiscal year '89 with county books, county audit books, and with people. And if you see on fiscal year '78, we started with 1 million dollars, and I won't go over all these figures, I'll highlight a few. Fiscal year '10/11 is when our previous finance director Linda Taylor, that I would like to reference to that's November 13. Fiscal year '13/14, which is the same year we closed our outline clinic, we closed Insil, Scott LaNeck, outline clinic, and I'll get in a moment into how many patients we were seeing in that clinic. So that was the first year it was taken $397,000. Then if you come down to fiscal year '16, '17, when the $117,000 was taken. What I wanted to point out about these two fiscal years, the way our state expenditure report works is, anytime we report, it's handed just to the state, we have to tell them who paid for this money, whether it was county property, whether it was state money, whether it was local money. I apologize. So in fiscal year '13, I'm sorry, fiscal year '13, '14, we all about come very white, no sorry. Fiscal year '14, $397,000 taken, and fiscal year '16, '17 was taken. However, we reported those funds to the state, so we reported those funds to the state. The state has closed those books. So, in the state's mind, this $397,000 and this $1 million, $117,000, it's already been reported to them and their books have been closed. So that is, that is concerning to me because that's one of the reasons we want to keep this, as I say, at home, was because if the state goes back and audit these books, they will see that we could forward these funds to them and then spend. And I believe there's nothing reported in the budget, especially you all have, that this $1 million paid for modest payments for the jail. So point being, it's serious, because we're good stewards of county as well as state dollars, that if they come back and look at this or see this, that they would have to open this year back. Because like I said, every expense we incurred, we had to save, whether it's state money we're setting on before first, county dollars, if there's no state money there. Last thing we pulled down is Medicaid dollars. Medicaid dollars are the detective dollars as reflected in General Statute 139A, subject to due debt mischange, the topic of that. So we used those monies last, and it's contacted by CHHS and my auditors for Medicaid, because we know we can carry that money forth for the continuity of our under insurance patients. So that takes me up to '17. So I'll go down to fiscal year '18 to fiscal year '22, '23. So what you see too, I'm sorry, on your far left-hand side, right now, I may have a dextral, far left-hand side is your fiscal year, the revenues that we actually received, the expenditures that we actually incurred, and in the middle column is profit and loss, that is how much revenues we had over our expenditures for that year. The middle column is some of the companies that are making now of the money that's taken in. And on your far right-hand side is the initial county allocation. When I said initial, it wasn't a final allocation, because you'll see some of the money that has been taken resulted in slightly less allocation. Fiscal year 1923, fiscal year '22, '23, we had approximately $1.5 million of COVID money in there. So, we have approximately $1.5 million of COVID money that we received. And I'd like to say this, out of our county appropriation, we also spent an additional $350,000 of county allocations that was given to us as our normal county allocation, because we didn't get enough from the state and for the state earmark certain COVID dollars for certain items. And we didn't say we could use it for that item, we didn't use it for that item. But not only did we use the $1.5 they gave us, we used the $350,000 of our county appropriation. And then we had four, and there's the four COVID workers, we lost three of those workers, we only have one worker left out of those three workers for burnout for COVID. So I'll go a little bit further into fiscal year '22, '23, finance paid an entry for $2 million. If you look to your far right, we received $2.8 million. If you take that $2 million out of that $2.8, that enough was for the net amount of county allocations of $821,000. Let's see. And what you see is the adjustments, when you add the adjustments back in, which was the money that was taken from us, we have earned approximately $13,498. Out of that $13, I'm trying to keep track of that, I'm a little nervous, I mean, you haven't did yet. We have received $13,498,000 of that $13 million as mischanges stated, approximately 15 has been taken from us. I do not think there are any maliciousness in this taking. And I mentioned Linda Taylor on purpose because Linda Taylor was a part of those initial letters in '99 that she received from the state health director who said, with Charles Archer and Matthew Depp, we've taken these money and error if it results in funding issues for the health department. I do not think there are any maliciousness in this taking. And I mentioned Linda Taylor on purpose, because Linda Taylor was a part of those initial letters in ninety-nine that she received from the state health director who said, with Charles Archer and Matthew Depp, we've taken these money and error, if it results in funding issues for the health department, give the money back. She knew that. They gave the money back. She was aware of that. So, the first time that the money was taken in thirteen fourteen, this was under the finance officer. And again, Mary and I talked, this was not personal. I don't think that maybe the information was communicated from the previous finance officer that did it thirty plus years, something to myself. I don't think maybe that tidbit was communicated, because so much of these jobs, you know, small things get missed out. So, I don't think there was any intent at all. I think it was just an oversight of what happened here. So, is there all that to say? Thirteen million dollars is what we've earned, six million is what was reverted back to the county's general fund. I like to talk about twenty-four, twenty-five, because I don't have that in depth, because this is the fiscal year we're in now, which for the state, it closes in May, and for the county, it closes in June. So, when they're closing it. So, if the two million, two point five million dollars that was taken in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we received two point eight million dollars of county dollars. Two point five million of those county dollars are going to be taken back, as this stands right now. That will leave us a net county allocation of three hundred sixty thousand dollars. Is there any questions or comments or anything that I did not make clear on this particular slide or this particular sheet?
You mentioned something about, I think on your last sheet there, regarding three sites that actually looks like closed around about two thousand thirteen.
Yes, sir.
Now, my question is this, and this is really one of my primary concerns. Now, Scotland Act does not have a hospital anymore, correct? Now, rural health, is rural health in Scotland Act?
We just found that, yes, they are.
Okay. Now, explain to me the difference between rural health and the public health department.
Okay. One of the biggest differences for rural health and public health department, of course, they're bigger. They have deeper pockets, they have more money, they can reach more people. The one thing the health department has that is a blessing for us, and I asked my auditor, I said, I quoted you many times, Stephen, can I make sure that I'm quoting correct? Based on the methodology that the health department uses, whatever it costs us to provide a service to a patient, not the patient's ability to pay, whatever it costs us. And thanks to Ms. Denton, I was looking at some of our salaries, our salaries have gone up approximately twenty-three percent in the last about four or five years. So, that extra cost for our nurses, the extra cost for supplies, drapes, light bills, that methodology is unique to public health. And I asked him, does any other places, rural health, does hospitals have that benefit? He said, no. Whatever it costs us to provide a service to a patient. When he does my end of the year Medicaid cost settlement, what he does, he looks at what the patients can pay, what it costs us, he looks at salary, he looks at patient numbers, he looks at our CBT codes, he looks at all of our billing. And he says, okay, for example, it costs, I called Ms. James, our nurse, it costs her sixty dollars to see Betty. Betty couldn't pay today, because Betty either doesn't have Medicaid, Betty may have been for a service, like family planning, and we may have slid off because due to my lack of income. I may have a little bit of insurance, but because of my income has slid off. So, Ms. James, it costs you sixty dollars to see me. If I couldn't pay, when we're settled, we get that sixty dollars back. That's very unique to public health. That is not unique to medical facilities. And those are some of the reasons why we receive approximately five hundred thousand dollars a year from that audit. And those figures have not gone down since I've been there, maybe about thirty thousand dollars when I've been there twenty-one years at the health department. So, that's one of the things that's helping us, is that methodology for public health that is not the same methodology for any other medical facility that we have.
So, are you saying that there are segments of the county, especially Scotland Act area, that even though rural health is there, they can't be served?
Well, one of the things we're learning is it takes a little bit longer to get into rural health. And we actually had an old red building near rural health, New Brail Building in Scotland Act. And I'm going to get into that in a moment about how many patients we truly saw next to that building and the hospital was there. And if you want, I can launch you that now.
Yes.
And if not, I can entertain any other questions about this particular PowerPoint.
Just upload this question pertaining to the PowerPoint. I can tell that a lot of what was written to this, but this is a lot of information for me to take in right now and to decipher. But, you know, I guess what sticks out in my mind is that having such huge surplus, how do we get to have such huge surpluses? And does that, that leads me to wonder, are we actually offering all the services that we said we're offering? I don't know.
I'm sorry.
To have that surplus, it's, you must see the mindset.
Excuse me, Snow. They can't hear you at the back, just speaking to your mic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it was turned off. My question was basically, with such a huge, how did this large surplus come to be? And did we fail to offer services that that money was supposed to go to?
Okay. If I can take you to our next sheet, I'll talk about that for a moment. Remember, Ms. James said that we had two different methodologies. So, twenty years ago, Mary Duncan, Teresa Mazingo, and I sat down for a week and we, and we tried our best to do what we could do. And Mary's smiling, because she knows she went through the pain and chocolate and everything else with us and stress. So, we figured out the best methodology that we needed at the time, which was found through maximum cash. So, if you look at the first highlighted section, it shows initial methodology and determined fund balance, which is what we carry forward revenues or expenses at the end of the year. And then if you look at the second section, you'll see new methodology, determined fund balance, that we just talked about a couple of months ago. So, look at fiscal year nineteen twenty. You see that with initial methodology, we only show that we earned ninety thousand dollars. The new methodology shows that we earned one point three million dollars. If you look at fiscal year twenty-one, it shows that we used six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars of our fund balance. The new methodology shows we earned three hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. And then I'll go to twenty-one, based on the methodology we've spent. And let me say this, on a job, I think most of us, if someone teaches you to do something, and until they come back and say you've done it wrong, or this is not right, most of us continue to do what we've been taught, unless someone says of a higher authority, like Ms. Duncan is obviously over me, she's over the entire county, I'm just over health. So, for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we showed that we used fund balance of two hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. The county shows we earned a million dollars. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we showed we used five hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. County finance shows that we earned one million. I want to rest on that for a moment. So, our mindset was, Ms. Davis, that we were losing money, we were bleeding. Every health director, one I have here, Ruth Robusto, one I have Dr. Cordula Burns, and then Linda Smith was at my board of health meeting, have all confirmed that they all thought we were losing money for years. So, we didn't know we had a surplus. We thought we were losing and bleeding money. Second point I would like to make is that we met with county management for, current county management for the past four years saying, hey, we're bleeding, we're losing money, what can we do? Can we do employee planning? Can, what can we do? Because one of the things post-COVID, some of our patient numbers are down. But I'll deflect and come back to that. So, we met with them asking, hey, what can we do? We're losing our fund balance, we're running out of money, it's scaring us. We've got patients, we've got staff, we don't want to lay off. We're losing fund balance, and this is scaring me. Not one time were we told that you were making money. We never knew that up until the last couple of months. That's one of the things I want to share. The second thing I want to share. Patients. Our patient numbers are down post-COVID. However, that's one of the reasons that we're able to see it. And I want to talk about the staff loss in a moment too. So, post-COVID, our patients are down. However, I can come in and see five or six services. So, one of the questions here from county finance and management is, how are you making money? One is that methodology I talked about, we get reimbursement costs. Two, because I come in for a service, I could come in for family planning, maternity, STD, I'm not there for STD, y'all. But I could come in for STD, I could come in for multiple services and we bill for those services. So, just because you count me as one patient, doesn't mean I'm not there for multiple services.
And we're doing the same work we have to staff that we had in two thousand?
Yeah, we actually had a hundred and forty-three thousand staff. We did not have that. We did not have that, we did not. We had a hundred and forty-three staff, of which now we have sixty. So, forty of those were from home health and hospitals, though they were self-funded. We've lost twenty-nine clinical staff that worked right in our clinic. So, one of the things where we're asking is, you know, once we found out we were making money a couple of months ago is, how is it you're making money? The one thing is, we've cut staff almost sixty to one forty-three. We've cut staff almost in half, and we're still providing the same services. A lot of our staff are doing more with less, like myself, for example. When the previous person left my position, I assumed her role and my role. So, I actually have had twenty-six years of personnel experience as well as finance experience. So, I'm doing dual roles, finance and assistant health director. A lot of our staff, and a lot of them are sitting in this room, and they know what I'm saying is true, they're doing more with less. So, that's one thing, we've cut our staff. The second thing is that methodology, where we get reimbursed based on whatever it costs us to provide a service. The only thing we need is our cash.
Can I interrupt for just a moment? When you say that, when you say you get reimbursed, you're talking about Medicaid reimbursement?
Yes, Medicaid.
Isn't it true that you would not get Medicaid reimbursement unless you had a fee schedule for what your fees are for services?
We do have a fee schedule that's based on Medicaid, however, if some.
But, so, those Medicaid reimbursements are part of your fees? And what we're talking about here is whether you have six million dollars in earned fees over the last period you went back to. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, if fees make up two percent of your budget, which I'm looking at the budget for this year, if fees are two percent of your total budget, how is it that you have an excess of fifteen weeks?
So, actually.
How is it you have an excess of thirteen million?
So, actually.
In fees, and fees are only two percent of your budget.
Okay.
You don't get to keep the county appropriations that we give you each year. That's not fees. That's not money earned.
Those are county tax dollars.
Okay. So, that's a couple of different questions, can I take one at a time? So, one of the things you noted was fees are two percent. I didn't do the math, but out of our seven million dollar budget, for this past, the year we're in right now, we receive a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars worth of fees from our patients. The second thing I would like to ask, tell me that again.
I'll need to say it again. What's happening here, you're so-called making money, because you're including in that what was paid for out of county appropriations. And you just said that DHHS told you all that what you should do is spend those county dollars first, and don't spend the fee earnings, because you get to keep that if you do that. That's exactly what you said.
And I'd like to talk about that for a second. When I said that, I think it was taken out of context when you, Ms. Denton, and a few of us, yes. STD is a prime example. We get five hundred dollars a year for STD billing. So, we have them.
That's state county, that's state money that comes to you.
Yes, sir.
That has nothing to do with this conversation.
That's not fees.
But, but it should, we do receive fees from them as well. We do receive some clinical fees from our STD, if they allow us to bill them. If they tell us, and I've got our director nurse back there, if they say, I don't want you to bill my fees, because my insurance company may see that you billed me for STD services, I don't want you to bill it. We can't bill it. If they say we can't bill them for STD services.
That's if the patient doesn't want to be billed.
Yes, sir.
Whatever. It's still, you're talking about here, you're talking about how much you have over after your expenses, how much you, you, what you say your profit is from fee income, not from county dollars or state dollars.
It's a combination of all of our incomes. The profit and losses is a combination of county, state, fees, everybody.
That's exactly what's wrong with your numbers. That's exactly why your numbers are not accurate, about what you're, because all you get to keep are the fees you get under the statute.
That's what gets scary, but yes, sir. So, I asked Ms. Johnson, who's not here today, she's in town. I asked her, I quote, so one of the things she said, because I went back and I found out, because one of the things we're saying was that there's county dollars in here, and that's what we're taking back. So, part of what I do each year, and I send to Mary and to Teresa, and there y'all are a couple that were sent to Mary, I send a very detailed list of every program that we have, every revenue, every expense, I bounce back to them, books from units, and I show it. I went back and looked at it also to see how much county dollars we have in here, because there's a couple of other statutes that I haven't talked about yet. And we have about a million and two of county dollars. I want to talk about a couple of things. One of the things from fiscal year eight up to fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, we had something called maintenance of effort.
Maintenance effort is no longer in place.
And you're exactly right, but it was during some of the timeframes that we're talking about.
And you're saying we didn't do that?
No, I'm saying you gave us more than maintenance effort. I'm not saying that at all.
Glenn, I want to hear from you, Glenn, and I'm going to ask to hear from you at length, when she done came. Hear from her, and I'll be, do want to hear from you at length, Glenn. Can we do them one at a time? Please.
Okay. So, let's see, I think I was at the end of, oh, I talked about COVID dollars. I think I was at the end of this sheet here. Are there any other questions or comments about this sheet? And I re-promise, Glenn, I'll come back to some of those statutes as far as some of the monies that's protected, and some of the monies that even after maintenance of effort left, there are other monies that are protected. Also, maternal child health programs have protected monies in those too, but I will come back to that, I promise. Are there any other questions or comments about this particular slide? Well, not slide, each face. So, if we look next, we just talked about the method of determining methodology.
Yeah.
And like I said, Mary, Teresa, and we did, and Mary and I, Mary and I are pretty much each other so true. I understand Mary has a great big giant umbrella of things she sees. I see only public health. But this methodology was taught to me twenty years ago. And as I said again, you do what you are told until someone tells you you've done it, you've done it wrong. And then you stop doing it. So, this is part of the reason we met with county management for the last three years, to say, hey, we're using fund balance. If you look at the new methodology, it showed I lost six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in twenty-one, two hundred sixty-one thousand in twenty-two, five hundred forty-seven thousand in twenty-three, nine hundred fifty-nine in twenty-four. So, to me, I'm thinking, our fund balance is depleted. You know, what are we going to do as far as our staffing? I quit retired last year, I've been here thirty-one years. I, the board asked me, when I sit with this young lady who I helped hire, they've not allowed me to sit on the board, and they asked me, when I give her three years to help her with inner office working, and I promised in my word, and I intend to keep that promise. So, one of the things I would like to say here, we have a previous county manager here. I have talked to three different board of, three different health directors. All of them are under the same mindset about this statute protecting public health money. And that we were losing money. And Mr. Brown is here, and one of the things that he had said, who's been here for fifteen years as our previous county manager, one, he never knew the health department was losing money in fifteen years. He never knew that the county was taking money from the health department in fifteen years. He also gave us a percentage increase, because he was convinced, just as we were, that we would be losing fund balance, and our fund balance was going away. So, that's some of the reasons I have health directors on Zoom, health directors here to support. It's just not me saying that we thought we were losing money. Health directors thought that we would be losing money. And one of my health directors work at Department of Health and Human Services, Dr. Cordula Burns, she's the one who closed outline clinic, you're saying.
Can you go ahead and sort of sum her out some?
So, the next thing we're looking at is our no-show rate. One of the things that Ms. Denton asked me to pull, when we closed infield in Scotland Act, was our no-show rate. And as you see here, the no-show rate prevents people from the performance, but they don't come to the performance. So, you see thirty-two percent of no-show rate in Scotland Act, thirty-eight percent infield. However, we were seeing nine patients a day, two times a week, at Scotland Act for a total of seven hundred fourteen patients. We were seeing nine patients a day at infield, and this is where Scotland Act had the hospital. This is when, where was rural health, infield. And this is also when rural health new building was sitting near us in infield. We were still seeing nine patients a day, two times a week, for six hundred fifty patients a year. We were still seeing nine patients a day, two times a week, for 650 patients a year. We closed those outline clinics because we thought we were losing money, because no one ever made us aware that we were not losing money. And then there's another piece, there's a personnel piece that we, Mr. Barrett said we need to do in closed session, that further explains our intent, or I thought that we were losing money, and I can't share that because it's a personnel issue. So are there any questions? And so even for Scotland Net and Enfield, we wasn't there eight hours a day, seven and a half hours a day. We only got there around 9:30 morning, left at 4:00 in the afternoon, and we saw these patients doing what other people were there.
But because we were under the impression we were losing money, we reduced services and community damage. We're supposed to be protected and providing these health services to reduce that because of the fact that we thought we were losing.
You were given a copy of the audit every year, and-
And six months later. And we look at munis once a month, which as you said, in the beginning of what the big picture-
Speaking of turn.
-article said, and we get it six months later after we've already closed together.
And then when we reconcile-
Let them say their, their say, and we're glad to hear from all of you guys.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions about our no-show rate? And I think that y'all is the last of the three pages that you all have.
Did the note, did the no-show rate have anything to do with the timing that you all were open?
We're not sure, honestly. A lot of times with the no-show rates, just like myself, I may make an appointment, forget it, may not realize. And since then, what we did do, once we closed them, Dr. Burns actually offered transportation. We started going by van, trying to pick up our Scotland Net and Enfield people. We start offering gas vouchers to try to, to pick them up. But since then, we've lost a lot of our children that was Scotland Net and Enfield. So we've had to do other creative things in the community. But we lost our children here because for whatever reason, we didn't catch the van, couldn't catch the van, things changed. But we lost a lot of children in this same year, and our last, same year, the first $400,000 was taken. Same year, we closed our outline.
Would you all be able to reopen the clinics if you all had the funding that's missing?
Yes, I want to talk about what we do with the money that people's returning, because I'm glad that we come on as well, and so why do we do that? For the moment, it's no secret that public health is under scrutiny via fire from the federal government as it pertains to funding to support the services that we provide out of that. There's cuts to Medicaid and SNAP to cripple our community. We have to find innovative ways that we will need of our-
That's right.
We have WIC as a response to doing SNAP, which brings over a million dollars to the grocery stores here in Halifax County with those services that will lean on heavily once SNAP is officially set. We're also in a time where municipal response is a big driver of our municipal disease response and us preparing to do that. We know that when COVID happened, we were not adequately prepared to respond, financially and staff-wise. Um, we have to have staff to, um, money to support staff for overtime, supplies, back means, and potential staff that may be needed for contact tracing, contact tracing if we enter outbreak status, which is very likely considering our immunization rate for our children is only at 90%. And we need to get 95% to prevent an outbreak in Halifax County. We can serve approximately 6,000 children for nine years with that $6 million. Again, reinforcing that continuity of service. That, that's what we need. We would like to establish, reestablish in our frontline so that we can broaden our reach, address the transportation here to care. We also have our WIC building that we've been in collaboration with the county management that is on Third Street in Rounte Rapids. We would like to use that as an outline clinic and establish that to reach that community where it's walkable. We do have a lot of patients that walk to their appointment at WIC, and we know that that's a need in that area of Rounte Rapids. And just some my own thoughts, because I wanted to wrap it up, I'd like you to answer your questions, ask your questions, Miss Lynn, so we can answer them. But all the information that we've shared with you today is going to share with our board, it's going to share with county management. And it all goes back to that general statute that protects the money and what we earn for the programs and which they're designed to ensure continuity. And Mr. Redding, you stated in your argument for creation of Halifax County, we are 98th in the state when it comes to overall health outcomes as a county. We have to have those funds to be able to drive innovation to meet the community where they are, to move that needle, to improve the health outcomes for our citizens and give them an opportunity to grow.
Thank you. I think maybe we should hear from the county point of view at this time.
I mean, I-
Do you have?
Commissioner Barrett, go ahead.
I mean, if we're at that point, I would definitely like to hear from Lynn.
Do you have a question?
Commissioner Barrett asked to hear from Turner Rollins.
Okay.
Do you, you have a question?
No, you go ahead. No, you're fine. Before, I, I gave you a memo in the weekly update on, I guess I'm thirsty since we're off on Friday. And you, if you had a chance to read that memo, then you know where, where my position is on all this. The first thing I'll say is that if the, the health department doesn't, no, no department in county government has a fund balance. Let's get that straight, first of all. It's a nice term to use to say fund balance, but all it means is this money that Mary has in her account with all the other county money that in some way, shape, or form is reserved for the health department. The statute that, that is, is referenced here, this 13839G, that actually what it says is that money that are earned from fees, in other words, fee earnings in the health department are to be used for health department services. Doesn't say it's protected. It is protected, but it doesn't say that. It says it's to be used to deliver public health services. That's no different, by the way, it isn't unique. That's no different than what Mr. Flynn has in building inspections. Building inspections fees also have to be reserved by the county for the expenses of the building inspection department. They can't be taken back and put into the general fund for other purposes. So this is not unusual to have fees earned designated for the purpose that those fees are charged, which is what's happening here. What that statute does not protect, what it does not protect are county appropriations that are made every year to the health department and frankly, to every other department in county government, get county appropriations. But guess what? At the end of the year, if you haven't spent that money, it comes back into the general fund unless that department has asked you for a carryover and you specifically approved it. What's happening here, and what's key to what's happening here, is that it's not that the health department is earning fees that exceed their expenses to the tune of $13.5 million. It's that, what's included in that $13.5 million are all the county appropriations that have gone in that have been supplanted by those fees. In other words, if, if you didn't have, if you go back, and you're going to have to do this, by the way, because there's no way you can just accept these numbers on their face. You're going to have to go back for each year and see what fees were actually earned under GS 13839G, and then determine how much those services cost. Once you know how much fees were earned, how much of those services cost? And did the fees earned exceed the cost of services? Then if you have something left over, that's what gets held and reserved for health department, public health purposes, not the money that the county puts in every year. And, and you know, I, I get it that the state says to every local health department, "Oh, spend the county's money first. Spend that first," because what is left over, you know, is, is protected from the county taking it back. Okay, it's just that, that's not how you run county government. That's not physically sound to do that, and it's not fair to the rest of, to the taxpayers of the county. If you're earning fees that are sufficient to cover costs, then if there aren't general appropriations that are needed, they should come back, quite frankly.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes. I don't want to get into the, I'm gonna call it the weeds, um, this terminology of fund balance, of, was cash on hand. My problem is this, is there's a discrepancy, and they believe they were doing something one way. The county said, "We're doing it this way." Between that, there's a segment of our population, okay, who we have failed. That's the issue. How do we right that wrong where we have failed them for all these years? Now, we were closing clinics because you didn't think you had any money. You're letting staff go because you don't think you had any money. You're working three jobs because you don't think you had any money. That's the issue. How, how do we correct the wrong that we as a county, no matter who, we as a county, we have done it. We have done it to these citizens. That, that's why, how do we move forward from that? That's the issue.
Well, let me finish my point, because I, I, I don't think that's necessarily the issue. I think the issue is that you, you've got balances every year that exceed your expenses and just means either one of two things. Either the county is appropriating too much to the health department, or you're burning on your, your fee income is a lot higher, in which case maybe your fees are too high. I don't know which. But in any case, whatever money is left that is cash on hand for the health department is county money, and it can be used by the county to fund next year's budget for the health department. Doesn't have to be from the general fund. If you want to, that's your fiscal policy on how to do that. This money isn't just there for the health department to do whatever they want to.
I agree, but if, if they thought we, the money was there, could they have hired someone? Could have hired someone with county dollars?
And provided more services.
Could you, with county dollars? That's, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to, okay?
Well, then who's not watching, who's not watching the ship here then?
That's another issue.
Well, I'll, I'll say one more thing, and that is, the, the state anticipates that you're going to be, you're going to manage your county funds in a fiscal, in a physically proper way, because, you know, this, believe me, I'm familiar with the consolidated agreement. I have to look at that thing every year, and it, it, it doesn't change from unit for the most part, but it says, specifically says, that locally appropriated funds, that's your county appropriation, cannot be withdrawn because there've been more fees earned than you thought there were going to be. Can't be withdrawn until the last two years, two months of the fiscal year, at which time you do your budget closeout. That tells me that you're, it's expected that you're going to decide we're appropriating more than was needed, we're going to bring it back.
That's right. Understood. Understood.
Well, I mean, I, a couple of things, you know, first of all, want to be sure, let's not beat up on taxpayers of Halifax County too much here, because I, I did the numbers here. In this profit and loss statement you sent us, the taxpayer of Halifax County has paid, contributed $32,214,418 to the health department those years.
County preparation, yes, sir.
It's $32 million from county taxpayers. So I mean, I granted, maybe we could have done a little more, but I mean, $32 million for the people we got living in Halifax County, I mean, I, I think we, I think we tried to do our best to make sure you got money. And I'm, I'm really on some of this stuff, and you got a profit and a loss here. In actuality, with, without the county of first grade, I mean, you're, you're not, you don't have profits. The county is subsidizing you to the tune of $2.5 million a year.
Sure they have.
You know, so I mean, let's, you know. And I get where you're coming from, um, but once again, I, I, I think if there, if there's something you need from us, from the county, you need to come to us and be like, "Hey, look, we want to reopen this place in Scotland Net. This is what it's going to cost. Can you guys help us out?"
There you go.
And they are helping us.
And I would be more than glad to sit here and listen and try to work if you were doing it, but I do have a pretty good understanding here of, of what this is. I mean, it's just, you guys didn't know you were, you were making money, because no, and I'm not trying to be, I'm just being honest with you. Because nobody actually did one of these. So now you figured out you were, had a little money left over every year.
We were using the previous methodology, not the current methodology. And that's when we found out that we were making money, about three months ago.
But asking the taxpayers of Halifax County to come up to $6 million, I mean, I mean, you know what $6 million is to people of Halifax, I mean, that's a poor county, what poor folks, man?
And, and it was sort of eight years of 6,000 children sick and permitted to visit, based on the methodology that we had in Scotland Net and Enfield.
And I understand, and I, and I, and once again, I think if, if those are kind of appropriations or something you need, I think you need to come to us and ask us for. And if we can fund them, hey, I'll be, I'll be the first one to say, "Yeah, let's fund them." But I gotta go, you know, like I said, it's, I, I, in my opinion, the taxpayers of Halifax County have made a good faith effort to fund the health department in the best way we can.
And I agree with that. My challenge is though, we were taught a wrong methodology. We did a lot of detrimental things to this county, Hollister, Enfield, and Scotland Net, that we didn't have to do, and like I said, even something in closed session that we did that was detrimental, that could come back to bite us, speaking with our state health director for OSHR. So, but yeah, I agree, the county, I've never thought the county's not giving us the money, and, and they're helping us with the WIC building. They are helping it. This is not us against them, and that's what I told Mary, that this is not personal. They're helping us trying to obtain the WIC building so we can do outline clinics, so that people on Third, Fourth, Fifth Street can walk into the performance, because that's where they're going to help.
Well, this is not a question, Redding, I'm just making a last statement so everybody can kind of get a feel for where I'm at. Once again, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think the county has $6 million to give them. I'm not going to ask the taxpayers in this county to come up with $6 million, but going forward, just everything you guys need, please, come, come ask us. I can promise you, we'll say no a lot of times because we don't have the money, but come ask us. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to help in any way I can.
Can I interrupt?
No, that wasn't important. Yeah, we just, it's a lot. So I'm sorry.
And I, and I just would like to, um, to share, I agree with Commissioner Barrett. Going back 20 years, um, before we knew that there was a, a issue in how, the methodology that was used, that was a, a issue there. I think that's unfair to our taxpayers to do. And what I can look for, it seems like there has been collaboration between our county director, financial director, and county manager about establishing a new methodology that you all have agreed to using that. And we see, now we're able to see on both ends, um, what is earned from fees and what the county is giving you. I feel like we could, should sort of move forward from there. And I think in our budget, I think, was it fiscal year, we, we took that, I hate to say took back, but, but took, took that to over two, a little over $2 million from you, but that has also been given back to you plus more in this budget, correct? This, this coming-
Yes, we're moving to $3 million, and the budget's coming up down.
So I think we have sort of got, uh, come to a agreement on the methodology to use and how to move forward. And I feel like that would be in the best interest of staying true to, to that and where we are at that point.
And can I speak to one thing that Mr. Rollins said? He said our fees, like our clinical fees, our fees according to state includes Medicaid dollars. So it's not just fees from the clinic also. And then I'm, I'm-
But I think the issue, the issue here again is the money that the county has given you and by law, or in turn to, to ask back or take back to continue to fund public health department.
Right.
Yes, I, I just want to thank this issue. We need to look at maybe table this issue because we got legal issues that have been raised, possible personnel issues. Can we table this instead of just voting no or taking a vote on it today? Then we do something that we regret to have to look at later, because you guys need to determine those fees, because it may not be $6 million, maybe $1 million, maybe whatever. determine those fees, 'cause it may not be six million, maybe one million, maybe whatever. But until we clear this up, I think we'll be doing the citizens disadvantage in the health department if we voted one way or the other today. Just my take on it.
I agree with Commissioner Silver on that, but I do, um, would like to know that, could the health department provide us a list, um, prioritizing what your immediate needs are, so that we can provide our citizens with what we are obligated, and I'm saying obligated, okay, to do. Especially in these areas where those clinics were closed, um, what the number of workers it would take, you know, so we can have an idea of what the cost would be going forward. All right.
And, and also, if you could let us know the fees, 'cause I heard one time they may be charging too much. What are our fees compared to other counties and surrounding?
Our fees are based on Medicaid rate, and the thing is, people that come in, if they don't have any money, they don't even pay the fee, because they slide off. See, those are some of the things that we have working knowledge of public health. Um, if a person comes in, like I said, if they don't have enough money, and I figure it's fifty bucks, but they make twelve thousand a year, that, that fee slides off, they don't pay it. But we still get that money back from Medicaid costs of what it costs us to serve that patient.
'Cause I'm really interested in, like, the rural part of the counties, making sure that people have access to healthcare, because lots of people don't see it. And I'll be honest, I lived in the city of Nashville, Rocky Mount, but when I came back to Halifax County, you don't see those disparities when you live in a rural area to you living in a rural area. And it's not saying the city's against that.
That might be like another discussion that we can have.
You're gonna, you're gonna make a motion to table-
To table this until we get further, um, clarification on some of the legal, personnel issues to maybe come up.
Okay. Um, that is your motion. Can I get a second?
Second, sir.
So, motion's been made to table this discussion. Do we need to identify who?
Bring him back, whatever.
Okay. To table this discussion to a later date, and more information is obtained. Um, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Barrett.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you so much, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
That's all.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bates?
Oh, do we need to take a break? Okay, so, shall we do, what, ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, feedback, five, seven, eleven, I can't see my glasses. Eleven, twenty-five.
Fiscal year 2024-25 property tax settlement report from Ms. Doris Hawkins, our tax coordinator and collector.
Thank you. Good morning. I've come to you this morning with good news and my annual settlement as required by North Carolina statute 105373. Okay, you this morning have your desk, the packet of information that I'm going to discuss right now. There's a memo which details county's property tax levy in the total for all tax districts, solid waste fees, and enforced collection fees. As part of that statute, I have a couple of items I'm breaking out a little separately, one of which is our real property liens, those parcels which are secured by that real property lien which were unpaid as of June 30th. If you will recall, I came before you at your February meeting with a similar list, so I provided in this table the change from what was June 30th back to February 1st. So in the county's taxes, we had almost $458,000 in unpaid taxes on real property parcels. But since February 1st, that is a decrease of more than 1.4 million. If you look at all tax district solid waste fees and enforced collection fees, those unpaid principal taxes and fees are a little over a million dollars, but that is $3 million less than it was in February. And that comes from $6,977 real property bills which are delinquent, but that is a decrease of $3,200 since I came before you in February. Each year, I am also required to report to you the insolvent's, these are personal property taxes that were not secured by liens that remain uncollected as of June 30th. And I have provided information on that in that last paper on page one of the memo. And I'm certifying with this report that I've made all efforts to collect all those personal property taxes by using all the liens available to me, including if I were able to locate property within another county, that as well. That was not the case this year. So those insolvent personal property taxes this year are $25,560 on the county levy. And then across all districts and fees, it's $48,445. And that is 533 of the personal property bills. I provided with you numbers here, looking back since June 30th of last year and our last settlement. And you will see that the county taxes are more, $11,000 more. But I'd like to point out, because it's not written in the memo, that the main reason for these bills is because of delinquent property, the personal property bills that are under bankruptcy protection, as well as an account where the business personal property, the owner of that business is deceased and the family that still had possession of that business personal property, not only needed it out of the county, they needed it out of the state. We were able to levy and sell on one large truck, which again recovers some of the unpaid taxes on that particular account. In addition, along with that insolvent personal property report, I am asking permission to write off the amounts viewed on forward delinquent non-business personal property tax bill. This is under one account, this for tax years 2023 and 2024. The reason for that is these business personal property taxes, I no longer have the ability to collect those because those assets were deemed uncollectible because they were sold free and clear of all liens by order of a federal bankruptcy court. So in addition to the insolvent report, I am requesting today to be able to write off those particular four bills. The county taxes, that's $3,751.53. And across all fees taxes is $8,507.20. Moving through the memo, you will see on pages beginning on pages five, I'm going through the end of the packet, you will see I provided, and you should be familiar with this because I've sent it, county management feature mark giving all right onto you. I have the levy settlement on the county's taxes. So I have pulled some information from that. And then the last two pages are summaries. You'll notice there is a lot of green on those, which is wonderful. Summary across all tax districts solid waste fees, as well as the county for both the current year and the prior ten years going back to tax year 2014. So close to the bottom of page two, you will see that we've collected 98.59% of current year's taxes on county levy this year. It was a wonderful year. That may have been my goal, but it's my staff. They're the ones that have reached that goal and exceeded it.
All right.
Oh, thanks, guys.
All right.
I didn't actually run these numbers because I kind of don't want to know. But if we had been able to count what we had collected to state through Thursday of last week, we were extremely busy. We would have definitely gone past 98.6%.
Wow.
I just don't want to know that because it really is. If you look at the prior ten years, again, going back to 2014 through 2023 tax years, the collection percentage of those years was 20.02%. That was my personal goal on those. I did have to revise it. Initially, I had set a goal of 25% of the county levy, and then I had to play out in all of the other districts. But I did have to revise that a few months into the year because I knew that was not practical. We were not going to do that. But literally, literally on the last day, we get 20.02%.
Wow.
Again, thanks to my staff's enforced collections efforts. They are amazing. On page three of the memo, I take those same numbers, but I did give the numbers for all of the tax districts, solid waste fees, as well as enforced collection fees. And here's where I need to apologize to you. Each year's memo serves as a template for current years, and I failed to update those numbers there. I will email those numbers to the court as well as to county manager so she can share that updated packet with you. Of course, I made those corrections. I apologize. But across everything, we were charged, or I was charged with collecting 60.9 million in levy and fees, and we collected 59.9 million. So that was a spouting 98.38%. So prior year levy, we started here with 3.975 million of taxes and fees, and we've collected 800,000. So those are lower numbers, and you will see in my statement here for the last year, which is very good. And across all of those fees, it ended up being 2.14%. I always try to include this information, or I do include this information each month in my memo as part of the percentage memo. But I, we flag our bills for different things that are going on. Sometimes just these sort of payment agreements, they are what we have under attachment enlargement. They are, those are under bankruptcy that we can't touch, just as extra information. These are all showing what our efforts are, as well as those which are completed collections. So these are the final numbers for the 30th of this year for all those flags. My staff has worked very hard this year. Putting those flags on bills is often a manual process, and they work very, very hard on updating those records. If you were to go back and look at prior reports, you would see that these numbers are much higher, and that's because of their efforts to update our records. Included in your agenda packet that I submitted prior to the agenda was published, there's also an order to collect for fiscal year 2025-26. And I do hope you will approve that because we lost track. But I would like to end my presentation by just pointing out that it is through the work of not only my collection staff, but this begins with the assessing staff, their accuracy of records, aid to my collection percentage on June 30th. And I referenced a lot in this memo already with the fiscal year of the tax year, but I'd like to point out that actually it is a tax 18 months. And it's broken down into three six-month periods. And Shane is our assessor, and his staff from January through June does when they are working on preparing our records so that we can build them in July after you and the other board have set your tax rates. So again, a lot of our work goes back to what Shane and his staff does, and that's six-month period, preparing those records. In the second six months, from July through December, my staff and I, we're focusing on customer service and helping those taxpayers who are afraid of paying their current year bills prior to delinquency. And I'd also like to point out, as we'll be doing our billing, and the reason for the error on this page and my delay in bringing this packet to you this morning is because we literally ended collections on June 30th at 11:59 PM from that last online payments batch posted. And then we began billing process July 1st at 8:38. And my efforts this past week were really focused on making sure that we have our billing process going. In general, I'm hoping to mail those bills no later than July 21st, but things are going well. I'm hoping actually we can get them in the mail a little bit earlier than that. Um, let's see. So that's second six months, July through December, my staff's current year collections for the most part, but we're still working on some of those prior years as well. In those last six months from January through June, while the assessing staff is working on the next year, my staff and I included Captain Richardson from the Sheriff's Department. He's assigned to my office for delinquent collections, as well as the legal department, jail, Allen, and Glenn. We're focusing on delinquent collections of the current year's taxes. So that is all of the public that's going on that day. And a key portion of those prior year taxes starts in current year collections. If we can do a better job of collecting current year, then obviously that carries forward not only the numbers, but it's also helping to make sure we're collecting prior years along with it as well. Because when you get your notice, if you've got a prior year balance, it's going to be on that notice. So we're not, that's just a soft effort on getting that. But a key portion is also in customer service, helping our taxpayers before they ever become delinquent, before we ever have to start enforced collections. And it's also taxpayer education. And that's going to be a particular focus of my staff and myself this year because you know, it'd be amazing how many people actually do think they should start paying their taxes in January, and they become delinquent on January 6th. You'd be surprised at how many people call us March, April, May, or in this particularly egregious case, last week, to set up a payment agreement. And in that particular case, the foreclosure sale on that property is tomorrow. So despite our efforts of trying to get information about delinquent taxes, what we're going to do is you don't pay, is education. It comes down to educating taxpayers. It's not a problem unique to how that's carried. It's every county, not only across North Carolina, but across the entire country. How do we better educate? And that's what we're going to do and focus on this year and try to come up with some innovative ways to do just that. It will never completely happen 100%. We're always going to have delinquent collections, but we're going to focus on trying to improve that issue. And I know you're ready for me to end, so I am going to touch on one more thing before I do so. I can't quantify these numbers, but I want to thank this board, the prior board, and county management for the move that you made, including my staff, in not laying building over there. Because it served many, many purposes. So number one, it gave you space. You put the public defender's office in the courthouse. It allowed a little extra space for Shane and his staff to spread out some and what was remaining of that space for his office. It serves our taxpayers very, very well when they can either park on the street or park in this parking lot and have two steps to get to us to pay their taxes. And we hear that almost every day in our office. I didn't realize how much it was going to help me as your tax collector, direct my team, hear literally conversations with taxpayers in the lobby or when a member of my staff is on the phone or something like that, and how much it was going to help me direct efforts and improve this collection percentage. So I can't tell you how much of that 98.59% is tied to that, but there is a portion of it that's tied to that. And I thank you. It was a headache getting us in there. A lot of this gray hair was not there 13, 14 months ago. And there were expenses, and there are continued expenses with us being in this building. But there is a definite remit and a benefit for it. So I thank you for that. So at that, with that, I am respectfully asking you to accept and approve my annual settlement, which does include the insolvent's report that is contained therein, as well as authorizing the order to collect taxes in Halifax County for fiscal year 2025 or 2026. And in fact, I wanted to step this far. One of my deputy collectors, Cheryl Moss, is still here. Cheryl is going to be retiring at the end of October, and she's huge part of that collection percentage. The rest of my staff wasn't even in the county because we need to serve our taxpayers over there. But even though, yeah, these are my goals, they are the ones who are children. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins, for your report. At this time, we do have two motions or two actions that we need to include in a motion. That is the acceptance of the property tax settlement report and also the order to authorize Ms. Hawkins and her team to do further collections.
So moved.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Jimmy Silver and seconded by Mr. Commissioner Barrett. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion passed. I remembered to carry that motion.
Thank you for the service to the majority. Thank you.
All right, that was good. Moving to item E. Ms. Beth first.
Okay, it's Stephanie Proctor.
Stephanie Proctor, I'm sorry.
She had an appointment with her mother.
Okay.
Hi, question is, hi, please. Stephanie Proctor, the 4H agent. First off, I want to say thank you for all of your support with our youth. And I'm excited to introduce our representation for youth boys. Youth Boys will be held in Wrayville this year. It's a partnership between 4H and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. It gives our youth the opportunity to see civic perceptions and how the, our local government works. So our representation for this year is the wonderful Kaziah Deed. And she has a few words to add from the show.
Hi. Awesome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Kaziah Deed, and I'm honored to speak with you today about the importance of safe spaces for youth. Places where young people feel welcome, secure, supported, and free to work. Every young person deserves a place where he expresses himself without fear, saving judgment, violence, or discrimination. Today, I'll explain why safe spaces matter, providing us vibrant experiences, and suggest activities for the physical world to build a brighter future for our youth. We all know that when young people are involved in positive activities, it keeps them safe, focused, and inspired, whether it's sports, music, volunteering, learning new skills. Youth programs offer young people a sense of purpose and meaning. Think about it. After school is over weekends, teens and kids need something to do, somewhere to go that is safe and secure, and someone who believes in them. Youth programs do all three. First, we have after-school programs. These give students a place to finish homework, get tutoring, or just be around caring adults. At many schools and community centers, these programs also offer snacks, games, or to practice. Places like the Boys and Girls Clubs and church youth groups are doing amazing work, giving kids a place to go instead of being home alone or out in the same places. But I strongly feel like we need more because the ones we have now are disappearing. Secondly, we have sports and fitness programs. These teach more than just how to shoot a basketball or score a goal. They teach teamwork, discipline, leadership, and how to win and lose with respect. You'll find youth leagues for soccer, football, baseball, cheer, and more. These programs are declining day by day, especially because they're not enough facilities or they are too expensive for them to afford. We need to have more programs for teens and kids to gather at house and school that are affordable. Third, we have creative and career-based programs. So not every kid might want to play sports, and that's fine. Programs in music, dance, coding, painting, robotics, and media helps kids discover their talents and passions. We have groups like 4H, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and local libraries that often hold workshops or summer camps. For me, 4H has personally had a great impact on my life. I have got the chance to flourish and make my voice heard in many ways, like being here today. I'm also the 4H president of my club. We, for us, we get to go to homecoming every year, HBCU homecomings. And I also was able to get the chance to sing at National 4H Congress in Raleigh. My grandma calls 4H the best kept secret of Alabama, and I do agree with that. Many kids don't know what 4H is or what they do in it, and it's really for all ages. I do agree that sometimes little kids especially are really difficult to watch when they're on the phone sometimes. But they deserve to learn as well. These programs could build confidence and teach real-world skills like cooking, leadership, or financial literacy. I believe that in order for us to keep our youth safe and engaged, having more events and resources will allow us to explore more. But for this to happen, we need events and programs that reflect the diversity of youth in our communities, different cultures, abilities, identities, and interests. We can't just have programs that serve a few. We need them for all. And it's not just about funding. We need financial support, but we also need volunteers, mentors, and leaders who believe in the power of young people because we owe people the future. I truly thank you all for everything that you've already done to help our youth, but I challenge you as a whole and as individuals to help make the community better by providing opportunities as small as family and friends events or running programs. So today, I'm calling on all of you to invest in our young ones. Let's create more programs on a safety, productive, and educational. Let's host more events. Let's give every young person a chance to shine, to grow, and to grow day by day because we live our youth with our high youth.
Thank you.
Okay, I bother you guys. We have to get a group picture so she can submit it for you boys. So if you don't.
Do we need to receive that information?
No, there's no action required. You will see Kaziah, who gave a fantastic presentation, by the way, at your annual conference in Groin. at your annual conference in Greenville in August. And she will be there, I guess, all three days. And you'll have the opportunity to have breakfast with her Saturday morning. And she's going to be doing other stuff with the 4-Hers, but you'll get one-on-one time with her that Saturday. Okay, and she has to have a picture, NCACC requires that, so that she can submit it.
Stephanie, will you speak up? What if I kill another one? Yeah, if you get one, please. Kaziah, a little bit more this way. Breath there, that's good. Oh yeah, that looks nice. Almost look good in this. All right. And one, two, three, and one, two, three. One more minute. One more minute, yeah, sorry. You look great today. One, two, three, and one, two, three. Thank you. Moving right along.
Agenda, and at this time, we'll have our county assessor, Mr. Shane Lynch.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have a few things to bring before you this morning. There are more formalities to anything. I don't think I've brought any late applications before this board, with the exception of perhaps Chairman Bryant. So I'll give you a little more information than I normally would. That way, you understand why I'm here and why I'm giving these late application requests. So my first one is on behalf of the Edward Cheek House Museum. It's a property here in the town of Halifax, a historic property. It was previously privately owned and then it was transferred to a nonprofit who failed to apply for exemption exclusion status in a timely manner, which is typically our county listing period, which is the month of January. So my authority as the assessor, if an exclusion exemption application comes in a timely manner, I can act on it. But anything that comes in after the deadline, only the governing board can act on it, be it the Board of ENR or if you're not an assessor, Board of Commissioners. So this late application for parcel 0601134, had it been received before the deadline, their request for exclusion would have been approved by me. The deadline for this tax year 2025 was the listing period and ended on January 31st, 2025. In your agenda packet for this agenda item, you will find a letter on behalf of Edward Cheek House Museum by Ms. Bell, detailing why the application was late. And then you'll also file a copy of the North Carolina General Statute 105282.1, explaining how, why this board can approve a late application. And it basically says that the applicant gives you quote-unquote "good cause", and you find, and they don't define good cause, so it's that, you know, at the discrepancy of this board to determine good cause, then you, then you're allowed to approve a late application. So then my request is for this board to make a decision as to whether or not to approve the late application for parcel in front of you, 0601134, for the tax year 2025. One more thing I would like to point out, late applications are only good for the year in which they are applied. So this taxpayer knows that if the board approves their application late, they have to make a timely application for the next tax. After that, they no longer have to reapply. And I'm open to any questions on this agenda item.
Are there any questions? I entertain a motion.
Slow moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Redding for approval and acceptance, seconded by Commissioner Jimmy Silver. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, let it be known by the word nay. And can motion is approved.
So the second item is also a late application, but it is not as a result of a property transfer. This pop, these two parcels, parcels 09, 09795 and 0903846, were both previously exempt, heard application from 2009. However, they were audited during our 2223 audit year. And the taxpayer failed to respond to my audit requests. So this application is for 2025, it's not a backdated application. There's no retroactive application, this is for this year. So they're trying to get approved for this year forward for exemption. And had it been received prior to the deadline, I would approve it because they meet all the qualifications. Inside your agenda packet is the letter from their controller explaining as to why the application's late. And then also again, North Carolina General Statute 105282.1 regarding the late application process. And I just ask this board to make a decision on whether or not to approve a late application for 2025 tax year. This taxpayer as well knows that this approval will only be for the current year and they will have to approve, sorry, make the application timely.
So moved.
I had a question.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Sarah, if I may just comment on this because your next agenda item is related to this request as well. And you may find that they're tied together. And what I'm going to ask, and Shane doesn't know I'm going to do this, I'm going to ask if you defer this particular motion about a late application until we've heard about the request for a refund or a release. Because it may well be that your determination on that request for refund or release means there really wasn't a loss of exemption to begin with, in which case you don't necessarily have to approve a late application. That's confusing enough. If we go into that, we might see, it might make, how you decide to release a request on the next item may decide when you actually need to approve a late application. If we could do that, Shane. Mr. Silver's advocate.
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
So being reminded what Attorney Wallace just said, my next item actually refers back to when the properties were disqualified from exemption initially. So as he was saying, based on your determination, how you decide to act on this item, may, may say by this board that the property should have never have been disqualified to begin with, at which time then you do not have to approve the previous late application request because it will be determined that it's not my fault nor theirs, but due to a incorrect act. All right, so the same parcels owned by Community Housing Corp. of Halifax, and these parcels again are 0903846 and 0909795. They were both audited during the 2022-2023 audit cycle. I, as the assessor, am required to audit one-eighth of all exempt properties annually to make sure they're still within the qualifications of exemption, which are, one being a nonprofit agency. Secondly, the use of the property, which we have 20-plus different uses that qualify for exemption. So being that I did not receive response to my audit requests, I disqualified these parcels from its exempt status on February 24th, 2023. And that resulted in these two parcels being deal for the 2023 tax year and the 2024 tax year. It has been brought to our attention that all correspondence sent to Community Housing Corp. of Halifax in reference to these two parcels were being sent to an old address of a former entity. Some of these, as you may know, some of these housing, low-income housing, moderate-income housing, subsidized housing, corporations fall under umbrella that are, include a lot of other companies. So we were sending it to their prior owners or prior entities' address, and we never had an updated address. But we don't know that until somebody tells us. So it wasn't until those bills went into force collections by our tax collector, Ms. Hawkins, and the legal department and paralegal Ms. Mosley, that we learned of the mailing address issue. Further conversations between myself and the controller, Mr. Pardew of this corporation, revealed that they were unaware of their taxable status, and they didn't know very much about these parcels in general. So tax you will find the scanned copies of the letter from their controller explaining the situation and the lack of accurate address for them, thus why they did not respond to my audit requests. And then there's a couple statutes in your agenda packet. One that explains how and why I audit these excluded and exempt properties. My powers and duties as the appointed assessor. And then the statute called taxpayer remedies that allows this board to release, if they choose, the subsequent property taxes that occurred due to the disqualification. So my request of this board is to decide whether this taxpayer has showed good cause that this is a, either a clerical error, which we cannot determine that's on either side, but possibly an illegal tax that I should have never disqualified it to begin with because it still met all the qualifications. I just did not receive the correspondence back during the audit process. And I meant the determination of this board to go either direction, have no recommendations. And if you have any further questions about what you were allowed as a board to do, I'd prefer you to talk to Attorney Wallace.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'll take up that mantle. So this is a little bit, and I don't want to get hyper technical here, but the only two reasons you could, this is requesting, if I recall Shane, a release of the taxes for 2024.
It's a release of, there's no money being refunded, it's taken off the books.
Right. Now, what goes on here is that you have really only two reasons you might decide to allow the release. One, if you determine that there was a clerical error in assessing the tax. I don't think that's the case, but that's from my knowledge of case law about what a clerical error means, and I don't think that's it. Or whether this is an illegal tax, meaning that this is property that got taxed that should have remained exempt. And remember, this property had been exempt since, oh, many, several years ago. And what happened in the interim, as I understand it, is that Shane was doing his statutory obligation to do an audit, as he's required to do on every exempt property in the county at least once every eight years. And for reasons that probably were beyond the control of the current owner after the corporate, they changed corporate identities several times, and I'm not going to be boring you with that either, but in any event, there was a new company name, actually. It's no longer the Community Housing Corporation of Halifax, hadn't been that for a while. But it's an address in Greensboro?
The address we were sending all of our letters to was in Raleigh, their actual current corporate office in Greensboro.
Right, and so what happens is a couple things happened. One is that Shane did not know this was an incorrect address. The property did not know that they were being asked to provide an update on their exemption status. So you can decide there's some blame there somewhere or not. Technically, I will tell you that under law, it's the duty of a taxpayer to keep the tax office apprised of their address. But in this case, I think there's probably a good argument for this exempt property, which has been exempt for years, to say a ball got dropped. We found out about it when Michelle was doing her work on a foreclosure on this property and figured out that, okay, this is what's happened here. And then it came to Shane with the request for a release. I think there's a fair argument here that placing no fault on anyone, this would be an illegal tax. This property didn't change in its use, it has always been exempt, it always qualified for the exemption. I would recommend to you that it would be an illegal tax for 2024, that the request for a release should be granted, we're certainly prepared to move on. And if you grant that request for a release and find that it was exempt property, I don't think it's necessary to accept a new application that you just heard about in the previous agenda item. So I told you, Shane, I didn't, you give me an extra day off for the weekend, I'll start thinking about these things. But I didn't, Shane didn't know I was going to pull that on you. But we did say that it, to me, it seems to be an illegal tax, and the release requested is proper. Any questions about that? Because it can get hyper technical with this kind of stuff. Yes, sir.
It sounded like a met requirement, and second, it should have remained exempt, is what it sounded like.
Exactly, and you recall the statute that Shane was referring to at one time was, says something about, was there a failure to respond in good faith? And I think that's certainly the case here. I think had this entity known that they were being asked by the tax collector to respond to the audit, they would have responded. It was two years later before they even found out.
After her and Glenn's explanation and Shane, thank you both for being transparent. I think this should make a motion that this property be released for the property tax.
Is there a second of the motion?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Jimmy Silver and seconded by Commissioner Sammy Webb. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion passed.
That's all right.
And I'll just take their application they provided and put it in our files.
Unless you and I talk about the actual naming of corporation, we can talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda, we have Ms. Mary Duncan. Our next director. To give us updates on the detention center financing.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. That happened at work too.
We successfully rolled 25, we're now in fiscal year 26, and there's never a slow time. So I come before you today with an update on the detention center financing. We had our first trial advisor create a new spreadsheet. USDA rates increased July 1st to five and a quarter percent on the sale of four that was managed fully, which would then was change payment plans. Middle on page two, above your display, here's LOBS, which is the can then be a definition of when you have their bonds.
Obligation bonds?
Yes, their bonds, those 20 years, 25 years. Those have expenses, closing costs and things. And then we have USDA, we did not quote private placement or in banking institutions. They only like to go 10 to 15 years, and obviously we can't afford 10 to 20 years. Anyway, I'm speaking with Monica for who there with USDA. We are able to qualify for property for intermediate rates, one half percent, 4.875 percent, so it's not necessarily going to be the 5.4. So that does hit. If you look at page three, it would give you the debt, annual debt estimate. You are able to prepay, but you're not going to be able, if you're already afforded, to pay an annual off in 31. After 2031, we will have freed up the manning debt service, which then can be applied to this, which will help us cut off some of these long years. Bring it up to you there. They're having some changes, we haven't forgotten, we're still working on it. Any questions you have?
This isn't a request for any changes. After looking at all the figures and knowing what we know from USDA, we would still recommend. After looking at all the figures and knowing what we know from USDA, we would still recommend going the USDA route. We just wanted you to see that there are updated interest rates. As of July 1, we wouldn't have been able to bid by July 1 anyway, but you do have the option of doubling up or paying more than what these payments are and not having a prepayment penalty, particularly after Manning School was paid off in 2031, because that debt payment amount will be freed up. And so you could pay it off a little bit faster than this, just at your discretion, and lower that overall cost of borrowing those funds. We just wanted you to have that information.
Thank you, mister. Yes, we'll have Christina Wales, our deputy county manager, to come forward about information about building inspections agreements with the town of Weldon.
Hello, Hugh.
Hey.
I'm going to give you a little additional background that wasn't put into the Senate agenda, excuse me, civic agenda. Before you, we have a normal building inspections agreement that has been put before you for approval from the town of Weldon. No issue with the agreement. That was drafted by our excellent county attorney, Glenn Reynolds. We have a similar agreement with the town of Halifax. We also have, just for background information, we have three other agreements with municipalities that need to be updated to this type of agreement. Those are old agreements, Glenn, from 2014?
Way back, yeah.
Thereabout, with the towns of Enfield, Hopgood, and Littleton. Okay. So current agreement with Halifax, old agreements with Enfield, Hopgood, and Littleton that need to be updated, no issues there. So a little bit of background on the town of Weldon, and I'm going to bring up my duet partner, chief building inspector William Flynn. Weldon, like Randy Grappes and Scott Limnick, has an inspections jurisdiction. This is something William shared with me that I wasn't aware of. He, his first question was, do we have the authority, the ability to go into a municipality's inspections jurisdiction and provide inspection services? He got the answer from the office of the OSFM, but the answer was yes, we can do that. Until a few years ago, I don't remember when Richard Brown left.
Couple years.
Weldon had their own inspections department and an inspector. You probably know that very well, Mr. Grant. Last year, Weldon did solve this issue by contracting privately, both with our inspectors, with William and Tommy, as well as with a level three inspector for some of these larger projects, the school project, the hotel project, et cetera. And those contracts, I believe, ended 6/30?
Yes, ma'am.
If that's correct. Not sure about the level three inspector, anyway, it renewed this contract.
It's been renewed or improved.
Okay. All right. The town administrator, Connor Winston, great guy, approached us toward the middle of this month. Connor will be leaving, actually, I don't know if you've heard, the town of Weldon actually the end of this week. So knowing that he was leaving, knowing that those contracts, at least with our inspectors, expired on 6/30, he's trying to tie up loose ends. And so he asked us for a draft inspection agreement, which we had put before them before, wanting all of our municipalities to be treated the same. So if we were going to do an inspection agreement, we wanted to follow in the heels to what we're already doing for our municipal. So he put that before his board on 6/23. I received it via email on 6/24, but I was on vacation. While I was checking email, I had no opportunity to have a discussion with this gentleman. And he's obviously very important to this conversation. So I did have a meeting with William last week, and I would say, while we're certainly willing to consider providing inspection services for the town of Weldon, William does have some concerns about our capacity. Right now, it's William and Tommy, and they are very busy, young men with a wonderful administrative system. But I'm going to let him tell you a bit more about that, to provide us some framework. And then my recommendation, you don't have to take action today. We will not be leaving Weldon high for, it is up to them, they can continue their contracted inspection services with the level three inspector, other inspectors as they may choose. So you can table this, and then give us a little bit more time, perhaps, to create an internal plan, so we can bring it back before you in August. I'll just let William to say a little bit more about their office, and they're doing a great job, by the way, as our newest department, besides Burks and Rick. So you'll step up.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This kind of came on, we'd spoken about it in the past, but we never really had a path or any concrete definition. But on a day-to-day basis, our department is able to tread water, we're keeping our head above water, and that's about it. And when we add some extra jurisdiction on, it's not just adding two or three things here and there. There's more going on in Weldon, I think, than a lot of people may realize. I think there's probably more going on than maybe their inspection reports reflect. Just a kind of a drive through town the other day, I noticed a lot of renovations, things like that, that may or may not be being inspected. I know the guys that are contracted don't have any knowledge of it, because I've spoken with them. So I know there's a lot more going on than just four, five, six inspections a month. I was a contractor with them for a period of time, and that's something we would do after work, we'd go over a couple hours after work, whatever. I had too many irons in the fire, I had to back out of them, but Tommy and Brandon have been keeping going. They're very tired too. But they, right now, they intend to be going. The town of Weldon has some options, because they are their own jurisdiction. They can, they're supposed to, they're required to provide that inspection service to the citizens. And their options are hire an inspector, they've had a vacant position, I think, for a couple of years, since Mr. Brantman. They have that option, they have the option of having state inspectors come in, contractor could call a state inspector and say, hey, I need a framing inspection, a plumbing inspection, whatever it may be. Inspector would come out of Raleigh, do the inspection, charge for the, charge for the inspection. That's an option. And the other option is contract inspections, which is what they're doing now to cover themselves. But more on our department, we're, like I said, treading water, and I think if we add that extra jurisdiction without a plan, how we're going to handle and actually moving forward to execute the plan, I think it would be harmful to the department, and we're not giving our citizens the level of security and safety that we need to give them as inspectors to make sure that they are safe and secure in buildings and homes and things that they visit on a daily basis. So that's just my simple take on, that they need to get a plan in place, or we just say yes. And as Christina said, they are covered, but it's not like we're legally paying. They are responsible for taking care of it, and right now, they're, that's what I have.
Do you have a second question? Come ahead. I have one question. So does this plan sort of entail maybe hiring a new person? Is that what it's?
It's kind of leading into that.
I think it would be very hard pressed to do it and not have another inspector. And also, in the not-too-distant future, the inspector in town stops his act, it's going to lose his certifications, he has probationary certifications. And I've spoken with him, and I don't think he has any interest in getting his standards. So that's going to put them in the same situation that Weldon, if they are in inspection jurisdiction, they won't have anybody to do the work, unless they hire somebody. And the last I spoke with him, I think their plan is to not. So we could be looking at, possibly, I mean, it's not all a responsibility of the county, but it seems to be a trend. That's even more here.
So your recommendation is to table this discussion until you can come back with this for a feasible plan?
We wanted to go ahead and put it on the agenda at Weldon's request, because they had already signed off on it at their 6/23 meeting. So I didn't want to be remiss in having you consider it. But again, the most important man that I needed to talk to is this tomorrow. We were just saying to do that last week, and I certainly understand those concerns. They want to provide the most timely and best response, because after all, his department, we always say it, is about life safety.
We're kind of the reds, that's why we're always there.
Right.
Because we're really about trying to keep it safe and not try to give anybody any grief or anything like that. Sometimes we, sometimes we get it wrong, so we go to Raleigh and we ask for help. We dealt on a personal level in another county, which just sometimes it's difficult to keep going down that path with people, but we are really just trying to make it safe and do it right.
So that would be our recommendation, is to table the discussion around, allow staff to go back, if we're going to do a plan, possibly a request, if we determine that we're going to need to try to hire, which in this environment, as you know, it's very difficult to hire building inspectors, they're just not out there. So that could be a path forward if we're able to find someone. Glenn, feel free to chime in if there's something you'd like to add.
I will, a couple of things. One, and Christina alluded to this, you'd already approved us moving forward with the other towns you mentioned sometime back in last fall, I think it was. So we've dealt with that, they just have not, for whatever reason, hasn't, they haven't taken any action on getting this new agreement in place. And about this new agreement, just to remind you, the way this is essentially structured is that if a town needs a building inspection, our county inspection department will go and do the inspection, and we charge our county fee for doing that. And in essence, we become, for building inspection purposes, the entity that does building inspections. Beyond that, things that a building inspector may get involved in might be minimum housing code issues, or on the other hand, let's see, the other item, yes, condemnations. Those are things that if a town wants to bring an unsafe building condemnation action or wants to enforce their minimum housing code, our inspectors are available on an hourly fee basis for them to pay for doing whatever inspection work or testimony in an administrative proceeding, whatever. In other words, we don't have a fee that we charge for that on our fee schedule, that's their, that's their action, but they use our inspectors to do the inspection and provide whatever events there is of minimum housing code violation or condemnation. So it's a fairly straightforward way it works. The real question here is, I don't think we were fully expecting Weldon to move on this so quickly. We were asked for a draft, we sent a draft, and the next thing we knew, we got back a signed document.
That's exactly.
That was a surprise. And then William has already alluded to, you know, the staffing issues that we could possibly have that we need to come back to you about.
Right. So for everybody who wants, yeah, there, the communities in the county like Littleton and Enfield and places like that, we provide inspection services to, under those old agreements, like the 2014 agreement. So we're still, we're doing those, and I think we're trying to get them updated, but I said, we're still taking care of business everywhere we need to do, and they're allowed to do it. But it's just, it's, every day is struggle, but it's fun, you know, the end of the day. I don't know if you can go twice as fast, but it's busy.
This is for Glenn. So just, I'm all for postponing this thing until we figure out what we want to do. But these agreements, so basically, you go to Weldon, you go to town hall of Weldon and get your permit and pay for your permit?
No, if you go, no, what happened, what happened, this agreement, you might go to town hall and say, I need a building permit, and they'll go see William at Halifax.
Okay, so we're actually collecting the fees, we're not actually charging Weldon. We collect the fees and we send.
They actually come in until I.
We're bringing them under our umbrella.
That's central, though.
That's what he's proposing, yeah. They collect the fees and they pay the contractor.
And of course, I had the question that I posed to William, and he's always ready with answers for me, about how much Weldon has collected in fees in recent years, which the past two to three years has been a real spike with these large projects. Will those fees that would now come to the county be able to completely cover a new position?
Last year, they were, I think this year, they have finished all, they were about a quarter million bucks. But because they had.
Schools.
Schools, hotels, all these big projects, looking back, back out of that, you go back, there's somewhere around, I'd say seventeen to twenty thousand dollars a year, and that's not, that's not going to cover gas, you know.
So just to put it, you know, those fees will certainly assist to the economy.
Yeah, I'm all for y'all bringing all that back at some later date, like, hey, here's what we're looking at. I'm all for it. I just want to be sure I understood how we.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions?
I had a question. Do y'all currently have a vacancy in your department?
No, sir. No, sir.
But you really do need to span, because I, on just being honest, I hear complaints all the time, people waiting too long, and I booked a house, and some of the people actually cost us major money, because you can't close on the dates if those windows get, so that's something I think we really need to look at, the guys down the road, spanning adding a position.
I agree. With the inspection part of it, we are actually required by the state to be on site for the two day, from the date of, as long as, if it comes in, let's say it came in before 12 o'clock today, by Wednesday, we need to do that. Comes in after 12 o'clock today, we get to Thursday. So that part we're good at. The part that we're getting, where we're getting jammed up is the applications coming in, reviewing the application, giving it what it needs to get, getting information back when we don't have everything we need. That's where things are getting jammed up a little bit. So with me having to do the office work like that and going to the field, Tommy's in the field all day long, our average drive time each day is one and a half to two hours, because we cover such a big area. It's a lot. So if we could, if it is possible, get another position, somebody could be in the office trying to handle that administrative side of it, and it would most likely be me, unfortunately. But I'd rather be out, I'd rather be out with the people and do the inspections, but it has to be done. So as the chief, that's usually where it falls. And so we don't have a position, but I think we're in the, the department's challenge. We're about a year and a half old.
Yep.
And didn't really know exactly what was going on over there. I came from North Hampton County, and it's twice as busy here, literally, than it is over there, which is good.
And William hit the ground running, just as an aside, maximizing efficiencies by implementing a cloud permitting software that is now also being used in the planning office.
It just causes some problems.
Which just causes some headaches as growing pains do.
Lots of permits coming in.
Yeah, more permits coming in. But again.
We have heard complaints about it as well, so.
Yep. But again, trying to maximize efficiencies, they really hit the ground running and done that.
And sometimes, just to visit on that just quickly, I know, we try to guide people toward that new permitting program, but they're all, we always help, anybody that asks for help, we help. It's frustrating sometimes, but we always help. So I, we've had people that told us they couldn't get any help, we don't turn anybody away from help. So that's what we're here to do, serve the public, whether we're teaching them, tutor them, inspect them, that's what we do. But I understand their frustration too, because I think we've all been on that side of it in some manner.
Thank you for sharing. So at this time, I need a motion on how we want to move forward with this agenda item.
I'd make a motion to table it, is that what we need to do here?
Yes. Sounds good.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to table it till later days.
Okay. All right, the motion has been made by Commissioner, I'm sorry, and seconded by Commissioner Jimmy Silver. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. We've come to a time of our agenda for board appointments, so I'll give you all the time to get there. I think we only have one, right? So according to our records, the Halifax County Tourism Development Authority has three members that are appointed by the Board of Commissioners with their terms expiring on July 31, 2025. They are Tony Brown, Raquel Harvey, and Yvonne Thompson. The following. The following action is requested. If the Board so chooses to receive nomination to reappoint Tony Brown, receive nomination to appoint Eric Williams to replace Raquel Harvey, and receive nomination to waive the term limit and reappoint Yvonne Thompson to this board. What is your pleasure?
Go ahead, say it. I'm making a motion, maybe.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded by Commissioner Barry and seconded by Sammy Webb to accept these appointments and nominations and term limits extension. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carry. Again, that's all that we have for approval at this time. We do have four vacancies still open. I don't need to do, go through those too. Okay, all right. All right, so our next item is, we get to hear from Ms. Scott, our economic development report.
I wanted to be the first one to say Happy New Year. Hardly so, she's the queen of Honda, so she deserves that, right? It's hard to believe it's another New Year, so we start cleaning, new budget to, you know, it's like, after getting your paycheck every month, you get to kind of figure out how to use your funds and the way that you all have it, so. Good time to do it. Just a quick update on our economic indicators, our unemployment rate has remained steady, four point eight percent compared to four point nine last year. That represents eight hundred and eighty persons unemployed in Halifax County. There were one thousand ninety-eight jobs advertised as of the latest information available, which was today. Building permits were over eleven point one million for a month, which is significantly higher than normal. There were sixteen new home permits issued by the city of Red Rapids, Edward, is that what it's called, Mr. Smith?
It's Canal Walk.
Canal Walk area. So that was the reason for that increase in building permits over a year ago. Retail, retail sales were over seventy million, which is robust and just seems like businesses are feeling the increase in the economy recently, I guess with the summer and travelers becoming more prevalent this time of year. I didn't get to the, the timing fit before I could present to you all last month, but I'm really pleased that, to report that we graduated from the DuPont Carolina Leadership Forum, Commissioner Silver and our four participants in that class, I mentioned to you. We also had from Halifax County Chester Williams and Mozeen Lowe were in that class. I think that was it, Glenn and Mr. Silver. Uh, Dr. Elliott from the Community College, yeah, she was there. But our task was to look at the workforce development issues facing these four counties, Halifax, DuPont, Wilson and Nash, and try to come up with solutions to address the job, jobs of the future. I also spoke to the Board of Trustees at their annual retreat for Halifax Community College at the end of June, and I really focused on our existing industry and the impact of our industry sectors and the community relative to the investment made of these sectors, in these sectors and the jobs that represent that. And I'll be presenting that to the Economic Development Board at their next meeting as well. But Halifax Community College is one of our strongest partners and certainly an ally in our economic development efforts. We had Todd Dickey, who is president of ECU Health, attended the Economic Development Board meeting. He provided an update on the focus of ECU Health in our community, namely their focus right now is trying to expand their services, look at outline opportunities to provide citizens in the outlined areas of the county better access to hospital services, and also looking at existing physical plant of the hospital and improvements to that. Also attended First Baptist Church, their men's group, had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. Chairman Vernon Bryant, Representative Ryan Peers, Congressman Don Davis and I were there to talk about what's going on at the federal, state and local levels. Congressman Don Davis gave a report on federal legislation, which was really interesting. And just a great group of men who are very interested in what's going on in Halifax County. And Chairman Bryant was recognized recently in the Turning Point Workforce Development Board Annual Meeting. He is the incoming leader, Chair of Consortium, so he was recognized for his service. And many of you I know know Charles Nakaheny, who is the Halifax Lennan, has been with that company for a hundred years, but he was recognized for serving thirty-five years on the Board of the Turning Point Workforce Development Board, so very interesting. Now I don't know if any of you know Michael Williams, but his life has been really, you know, just tremendously sad situation. Our staff also attended the STEM Tastic Student Showcase at Halifax County Schools recently. I think you were there, Commissioner Davis, you got to meet Perry, who's with our office now. And just a wonderful, just example or just exhibits of the thinking that goes on with our students and looking at solving and addressing problems in our community that you just look, mobile charger, floating weather station, and then tackling teen bathing, you know, all of these were STEM activities related to those topics. Very proud of our students. I mentioned to you last month, our Air Boss Road project, we talked about that for over a year, trying to put together funding. We did send that to the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission last month and we made the first round of approval. Applications are going to all the other agencies this week, they'll be submitted this week. That's Economic Development Administration and of course, NCDATs already approved their match. So we'll know by November whether or not we have all of the funding put together for this one point eight million dollar project. And that's really going to be an important part of retention and supporting Air Boss' growth in the town of Scott and Net. Project updates, our Stella Jones project's now complete, just waiting for CSX to install the signal for the rail spur. We're finishing up all the paperwork related to that. New restaurant in Enfield, I don't know if y'all have been there yet, but it's really good. I went last week, it was like, please try it, it's great. It's called Giordino's, I can't pronounce the rest of it, but it's a really good Italian and other type restaurant. And then the Fairfield by Marriott, the opening date is now August twenty-first, that keeps moving, but hopefully this is the last one. Our inquiries were a little slow in June, as they normally are because companies are attending graduations, taking vacations, things of that nature. We've had four new manufacturing inquiries, three of which were solely building focused, but we did not have a building for work. And then we had three visits by companies in the month of June. Hopefully you got the information on the Economic Empowerment and Inclusion Summit that is going to be held this weekend at Oak Grove Baptist Church. Hopefully you can attend or if you know anyone that's interested in attending, this is going to take place from four to six P.M. We're sponsoring part of it to support the opportunity to bring these experts, you know, Keven Kimble is an expert in helping people understand how to grow financially and finance businesses and support growth and building wealth. And so just a really great agenda that I think everyone, it's been seven years since they've had one of these summits. I attended the last one in Bill Middle School, just very talented and very much an empowering group of speakers. And then we have a Secretary of Commerce visiting on July seventeenth, and he's going to be at the Irving Griffin Center at two P.M. We're working to try to set up a special meeting in the head of time with the Secretary. I'll let you know if we are able to make that happen. You've got a copy of the report, these are some meetings and activities that are coming up in the future. I've mentioned some of them already. And then, anybody have any questions? So under the topic, sit here, but I would have to deliberate for today. I'm sure it's very timely. I do have closed session, I must do a session.
Thank you. Next up, we have our county manager report.
Good afternoon to everyone again. Just a few, just brief items, just for your information. If you'll see at your places, the salmon orangey color document, that is your fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget document. We print those in-house to try to save a little bit of money and I think Jennifer Simmons in Finance does a great job with that. So that, that is your adopted budget. If you have any questions, let us know. Found out late this morning, you got some information, I believe late last week, about Halifax County Schools had a student film that they did and they were going to have that recognition this afternoon at their board meeting. That's been postponed and NCACC was supposed to come and do some presentation. They haven't announced a new date yet, they're hoping to do it at their August meeting. So just want to let you know that because that was supposed to take place this afternoon. And then I just have two items under other business, because technically they're not my business, they're your business. So I'll take the, I'll go through those with you under other business. And that's all for me.
County attorney's report.
Thank you, madam chairman. Very briefly, if, if you catch other news from time to time, you may be aware that in the opioid litigation area, there have been some recent movement in the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. The bankruptcy plan has now come around to a point where there are going to be some settlements to be voted on by local governments and states. And along with that, the Sackler family has also decided to participate in that settlement. So we will be, I'll be getting more to you at our next meeting in August about things that we might need to approve to participate in those settlements. That's been a, that's been a long time coming and going, it's even gone to the Supreme Court and backed down, so we're, we're glad that that is reaching a conclusion. In addition to that, we learned in the last week or ten days that there are nine additional defendants who have reached settlements with the National Consortium, and we'll have information on that for you as well. This will simply, and I, I don't have hard figures on how much it will add to the, the amount of settlement money coming to Halifax County. I don't have that now, but I should have that in August, and I'll ask you to take action on those proposed settlements as well in, in August. So if you hear about that, I just told you we'll be dealing with it in August. It's something, as things develop, more definitely. The only other thing I'll say is that last Wednesday was first Wednesday of July, and we still don't have a decision in our Rock Rapids case concerning nine-one-one funding. This will be twenty months.
I was going to add.
I get nervous, but I actually, it's been so long now that I quit being nervous about it, Mr. Webb, you know what I mean? But we, we, we look for emails every first and third Wednesday and hope we'll get some resolutions soon, and you'll be the first to hear as soon as we know something. I have nothing for closed session. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our reports. Moving on to other business, we have a voting delegate for the National Association of County Commissioners.
Yes, yes ma'am. NACO asked that you select a voting delegate for their business meeting. This conference takes place actually starting this weekend, so a couple of you are going to be traveling to Philadelphia for the conference. We have Commissioners Silver and Redding registered to attend. I believe y'all have kind of worked it out amongst yourselves that Commissioner Silver is willing to be the delegate, we'll have to have you vote for that. I will say that you submit it online, I don't do that for you. Sometimes they do pop up with an alternate, so if it's all right, I can submit Commissioner Redding as the alternate. But if you, as a board, would vote to make that appointment for that business meeting, this is for the national conference.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Webb.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Barrett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carry.
All right, thank you. The next one is for your state annual conference, the NCACC Annual Conference taking place in Pitt County later in August. You heard from Ms. Kazaya earlier, she'll be your youth voice delegate to that conference. There's also a business meeting that Saturday afternoon of the conference, and they asked us to appoint a voting delegate. And I believe that also may come up with an alternate once I get into the portal, so if you would like to appoint a delegate and then consider an alternate, I can enter that as well in case something comes up that somebody can't attend the business meeting. And I believe everyone is registered for that conference except Commissioner Webb. So there's five of you registered for that conference in Pitt County.
I'm willing to serve as the voting delegate.
You need a motion for that? I'd like a motion. Ms. James, we are voting delegates for.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay. And if you would like to consider appointing an alternate in case, you know, there's something comes up, you can choose to or not to, it's up to you.
Do we, do we want to do an alternate or?
Would you be interested, Commissioner Barrett?
This is for what? This is for the thing in, in Pitt County?
This is your, your state annual county commissioners conference in Pitt County later in August. It will be the business meeting, which takes place Saturday afternoon.
Okay. Y'all feel that?
Okay. Is that, we need a motion for that, correct? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Silver.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Reddy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and I'll submit those. And then, oh, this would be me.
Excuse me, I'm just going to let Dea, they actually already completed, they just sent me a sample.
Oh, you did? Okay, good. I'll take that off my list. Did they ask for an alternate?
They didn't ask for alternate, they said they may, but they didn't, and they just sent a sample about.
Okay, all right, very good. I will do the state conference then. Okay.
So in your package, we have a letter honoring Mary Strickland for her ninety-ninth birthday. I think that was in your packet, so we need approval of that letter in her honor.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jimmy Silver, they're second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Webb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
I have one additional item when we're ready for it.
Okay.
You ready for it?
Yes.
I won't be the dead horse for you at all. After this weekend, talking to several people, seeing all the posts online of the pictures of Labinga floating around all over Lake Gaston, and after reading through a lot of things, you know, reports from North Carolina State University, Canadian Department of Health, you know, seeing that Mecklenburg County, Lincoln County, Aridale County, Cuyahoga County are all treating Labinga in Lake Riley and Lake Norman, even House Bill five thirty was presented to the North Carolina House appropriating three hundred thousand dollars for treating Labinga in Lake Gaston. I'm just at a point, I think, I feel like Halifax County needs to step up like everybody else. I make a motion that a hundred fourteen, is it a hundred fourteen thousand dollars?
One sixteen is the correct.
One sixteen that's in the budget for fiscal year twenty-six to be allocated to Lake Gaston. We can have, we counsel for the treatment of Hydril and Labinga in Lake Gaston.
Let me get the clarification on that. I assume you don't mean to appropriate that, you mean to make a grant available to them for that, for that purpose? Because they're not an entity we fund, they're an entity we can make a grant to.
The language I would defer to you, I mean, is the one I'm, the one we budgeted, I want, over how we've been giving it to them in the years passed, I want to give it to them again for the treatment of Hydril and Labinga in Lake Gaston.
I agree. Okay.
Do I need to say it specifically or are you?
No, I, I, you all know my position in this. I have tried and tried and I have emailed and called, I have DEQ and their person who deals with this with Lake Gaston, we, and I get no calls back. and I get no calls back. Everyone who I talk to thinks I'm trying to hoodoo someone and not, and get out of doing this, and I'm trying to find a way to do it that I, in my opinion, is lawful. Um, now, if, if, if we want to figure all that and just do it, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm grown, I can handle that. Uh, but, but you know my position on it. Okay.
Okay. So there's a.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Now, how would that affect the $75,000, I think? Is it $75,000 that we appropriated?
So, I believe that was in last year's budget. This year's budget has the full 116 already in it. Um, I, I get the pressure that you're under. I'm okay with just writing a check to them at this point, and, and just full disclosure that you have the legal opinion, and you're choosing to go ahead and fund it, which I have, I'm not going to miss any sleepover.
We need a reasonable, good base, you know, something to base it on. And I think the fact that seven other counties in North Carolina and reports from North Carolina Extension also gives us a reasonable, good base, you know, to hang our hat.
And the funding is available.
Yeah, I, I won't get into the weeds, but I will get into the weeds about what's happening with Lake Norman and the other three lakes in the Charlotte, Davidson County area. They have an entity, that's a Marine Commission that's been in place by local legislation for years. We don't have that. I have said before that what needs to happen is for, I mean, is it four or five counties? Five counties in North Carolina and Virginia need to do an interlocal agreement about this. I'm not happy with just going through as we go on some kind of gentleman's handshake. And, you know, no one wants to do it, which is fine. Um, you know, I'll, I can make up something.
Well, I'm, and I'm, I, I'm not disagreeing with your opinion, you know, I've, I've heard it, I, I respect it.
And I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm quite sorry that the pressure has come down to doing something that I've told you many times is unlawful. Uh, but if, if you want to do it, then, you know, I can, I can figure out the best way to draft it and hope that it doesn't come back one day on some taxpayer down the moonlight who says, why are you spending my property taxes on treating Lake Gaston?
And one of my concerns is, are we going to be here in the same position next year? Having the same debate?
Each year it will come down to you deciding whether or not you're going to appropriate a grant to Lake Gaston Weed Control Council to do something. I'm not quite sure whether those they're going to do. Uh, but, you know, we can say loosely to treat hydrola and lymbia, but what will be the, what's the next weed coming along? Because there's a eulgrass problem out there too, from what I understand. Believe me, I look at this stuff, I've studied this situation. I'm not ignorant about what's happening on the lake. I'll just keep trying to tell everyone there's a way to do this, and this isn't the way, but, you know, if, if, if we're tired of it, then, you know, we can just put it to rest that way.
So what is the alternative, in your opinion?
The alternative is to get, is to give the state, to spec, and particularly DEQ, DEQ, to give us authority, for at least as to hydrola, to engage in a hydrola control and management program under the authority of the Secretary of DEQ. We've gotten that each year, but it's been limited to participating in their grants to Lake Gaston Weed Control. It doesn't have to be limited like that. I've tried to get them to open that up, I get no response from them about it. The other thing that needs to happen is at some point, someone's got to decide whether or not lymbia is a nauseous aquatic weed. Of course, it's not, because it's not a plant, it's a, it's a bacteria. But in any event, if someone wants to decide, you know, you, you, a county has no business getting involved in treating this stuff. It needs to be on the state. And then, if the state wants to give authority to the county to act under the state's, you know, authorization, then okay. But as it is right now, you know, can you imagine all 100 states deciding whether or not to dump the next weed killer? You know, it, it, it makes no sense, there's a reason the law is the way it is, and there's a reason they do it the way they do out in Lake Norman, because they have had a Marine Commission that did that for years. That's about to go away because another county's just getting out, had enough. Uh, so, I, I, I need, I need to stop.
Madam Chair, you have a motion, you just need a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of this, uh, motion?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Okay, the motion is carried.
Ms. Davis.
Mm-hmm.
And I tell you, Dea, and Rose, how can we go about, for next year, we know it's going to come back, making them, establishing requirements and setting outlines, tell them upfront, if they don't meet these outlines, guys, we're not going to fund it, and, and if we're going to take and fund it, you know, set something up for, we know we won't be sitting here facing it. That way, if they meet the requirements that was set out, we'll fund it and won't go through all this, or if they don't, we know what action to take. But I think we need to set something up, you know, start planning on setting up a treaty.
Or can we, can we enter into an agreement with the other five counties without the state? So we don't have to go through state legislature. If there's some way we can enter into an agreement with the other five counties that would make this more palatable, more palatable?
We, we need that agreement, but frankly, we need authorization from, in my opinion, from the legislature to take, do this activity on a body of water that is not owned by the county. And if it is right now, that $116,000 that we just approved to give to Lake Gaston Weed Control Council, you don't know where that's going to be spent. It's, it could be spent in Warren County, Millhampton County, Brunswick, or Mecklenburg. But that's, that's Halifax County money going to treat something in Mecklenburg County, Virginia. And you're doing that without any interlocal agreement among those five counties about, okay, we'll all get together and do this throughout the lake. But, it, it's not hard. It's just not hard, it's just no one wants to deal with it.
Yes. I would recommend, um, communicating with your legislative delegation, Representative Pearson, Senator Sanderson, and ask them to work with DEQ to get this straightened out so it's not such a headache every year. We, we can help draft something to send to them, and you can also include it on your legislative goals that we would submit at the end of the year. But we can start the conversations anytime.
Okay.
But that, that's what, I mean, I think you're to the point of needing legislative assistance, um, and if, if they can do that, that would, that would really help the county.
Dea, clean, is it possible that you, maybe even the month of August or September, could have something drafted that we could send out and look at sending to these legislatures?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Could we, is September or August, which one, I, I lack dates and some time, so we can.
I don't have any plans except a, a three-day conference in July, so I don't have any thoughts about August.
We'll shoot for August to put some, um, put some, a draft in front of you for your approval to send to our legislative delegation. We'll do that for your August meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, it's time for us to go into closed session, so, um, what we, at the moment?
Um, I think the only thing for closed session, do we have minutes?
We have minutes. And, uh, economic development project, update. Okay, so at this time, I entertain a motion to go into closed session to, um, address minutes from closed sessions and our economic update.
Commissioner Davis, could we get a, just a five-minute break? Just five minutes for bathroom break.
Okay, we'll take a break.
I mean, you can go ahead and carry your motion, but I mean, just.
My motion is going to close session.
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay, motion has been made and properly seconded, so at this time, we'll all enter into closed section, session, and then we'll have a break.